I hereby call the Jefferson County Board of Zoning Appeals. All members are present except for Commissioner Bryan. Bryan's not here. I think he's the only one, okay. So having a forum, I would ask the, at this point in time, let's see what I do in my agenda. Here we go. Since we're called to order, if you wouldn't mind, we're going to do prayer and pledge of allegiance. If you please stand, please.
Father, we ask that you be with the Sloan family during this time of loss, and it is a great loss for us here in Jefferson County. We ask you to be with our family as they go through this mourning process, and we thank you so much for all the great things that he has done for our county throughout the years. We ask you to continue leading our county and guide us in all that we do. And in the meeting tonight, Father, let us put you first and foremost in everything that we do and conduct ourselves accordingly. In your son's name, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item will be the minutes. I'd ask the members, if they had an opportunity to review the minutes, any changes or corrections, otherwise I'm looking for approval.
I'll make a motion when approved.
Got a proper motion? Second. Any other discussion? All those who pay your right, say aye. Can you oppose? Okay. All right. So next item is citizens input, and some people have filled out their forms in here, but they've not expressed if there was a particular item that you wanted to discuss, nor if you wanted it before the Board of Zoning Appeals or before Planning Commission. Okay? So I say we'll just knock them all out as we go along. All right. So the first one I've got is Mr. Benson. Is it Bryant?
I'd like to go last.
No, sir. You have to go with the order that I take you. So it's your turn.
Are you up to your minute?
You've got three minutes.
My name's Benson Bryant.
Can you give your address, please?
What?
Your address.
528 Klein Road.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, I'm a concerned citizen. I've started a group on Facebook called Concerned Citizens, and I spoke with Tim Seal the other day, and one thing that came up, a lot of things that are discussed on the site has to do with just, you know, say the rock quarry or these new sheds, if you will. There's lots of things going on, and the one thing I found out is there are, the citizens that join the properties are not being notified that they, that there's development coming their way, and I just have no idea why that isn't done. He said, he said they don't have a budget for it. There's no budget for it. He said that the planning department is kind of responsible, would have to hand that down. I'm not sure how it has to happen, but I'm suggesting that, you know, before any major developments are allowed, that the citizens should be notified, I think with, you know, at least 30 days prior to it happening. I'm a real estate agent, and if, you know, depending on what the project is, it could greatly affect their property value, and that's critical. You know, and there's been slaughterhouses, battery plants, you know, rock quarries, whoever's running that rock quarry, I guarantee you their property value went down thousands, thousands. And, you know, that's just not fair. And you guys make these decisions, and I don't know if you realize how much it may impact the community when you do that, you know, and it's kind of important. So anyway, my request is to somehow come up with a plan to notify property owners around the, you know, the plant, anything that you are going to pass planning or zoning, I think the public should be notified. They aren't being notified, and there needs to be a budget to allow them to be notified.
Thank you. Next, Tina Bull. Okay. If you would, please give us your address.
1260 West Highway, 2570, Danj, Tennessee.
Thank you.
I'm less than a tenth of a mile from the construction site. You know, they have now got new permits to be working on more land at the back of the property. That area is in the rezoning. So once it's rezoned, they're going to come in and pay the county to the property, the 100 acres they already have, to be rezoned at that same zoning. So the rock quarry is going to continue, it's going to expand, it's going to get bigger. I mean, they've got a lot of money, they've got a lot of lawyers helping them with this stuff, but they're coming in, and I don't understand how they got permits when we were trying to stop them in the first place, but yet they're coming in through the back door again. So you guys know, I've been up here many times, I've come in month after month after month. I've not been here for a couple of months because we were waiting to see what they did. There's a lawsuit. We haven't heard anything yet. It's not been resolved. So how are they able to get more permits to continue to expand? You guys are planning commission, zoning commission, you guys need to get together and get this straightened out. I mean, we were not warned, like he said, people in the neighborhood need to be told what's going on. We were not warned. I just happened to hear about this other through the communication of people in the community. So if you guys tell us, help us stop the destruction of our community, stop it. Stop the destruction of our, our health, our homes. You know, people say, you can sell your house, that's not a house, it's a home. So I think, I think you guys step it up some, but Whaley needs to be stopped. They're coming in and just keep on getting, you know, buy more land? Go ahead, give it to them. Let them open up more money. Come in the back door, open it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Peggy Hikes? If you give us your address, Ms. Hikes.
Yes. 1231 Maguire Roads, Indian Creek Community.
Okay, thank you.
I've been here before. I would just like to remind you, not that you need a reminder, that there was a survey done in this county, and the majority, the vast majority of the people in the county said they would like it to remain rural, they would like it to remain agricultural. I think this committee needs to seriously look at the zonings. They need to make them very clear about what can exist in each zone, what cannot, and if something comes in that does not exist, it should not be allowed to start. Y'all have been appointed or elected by the people of this county. So someone moving in from another county just to disrupt our lives should be way behind your concerns for the people who live here. The noise, the destruction of our homes, of our foundations, of our well water is unacceptable, and this committee is responsible to the citizens of this county. We had a prayer this evening and a pledge of allegiance. I would remind you that you should do unto others what you would want done unto you. If you do not take care of this zoning issue now, you could have these people or similar right next to you. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Malina Rogers?
Good evening. I live at a...
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
I live at 1149 West Dunplin Valley Road, and that is directly across 2570 from the Whaley Rock Quarry. And so there's several things that are still bothering me. Of course, because I live there, I have to live with it day in and day out. At 6:30, they start their equipment AM, so if I wanted to sleep in one day, that's tough. So their equipment is multiples, and so it's very loud. At 6:45, I start hearing duh, 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 and then the lifting of the big rocks and throwing it in the trucks. The dust is still a problem, the blasting is still a problem. We have, they have gotten a cease and desist order that doesn't affect them. I'm not sure why it doesn't affect them, but I guess because they have state and local contracts doing work around this county. So, you know, they got more money than I got. All I have is my home. The foundation has got cracks in it. I have, a few months ago, videotaped it, but I don't have any proof that the cracks came prior to the videotape from Whaley. But any new ones, I bet you I'm gonna have that information. They have, like, they, it's been touched on, they've got two new permits with the state. They, they've got more than that, I think, but two that's really bothersome. They've got a 12 acre expansion for rock harvesting, and then they've got a, they're going to be able to process on adjacent property. So here's my question. Y'all are the zoning committee or the Board of Appeals or whatever you are, and so what does processing mean? Does that mean a rock crusher? We already said we don't want the dang thing. And adjacent, does that mean right next door? As far as I'm concerned, there's only two commercial properties in that area, and they are really close to people on elementary. So I'm not so hard-nosed that I don't want people to be able to do stuff with their own land, but not at the detriment of other people and their neighbors. We have to endure this, and it looks like we're going to have to endure this the rest of my life. That property's been in my family for generations. It ain't much, but it's what I got. And so I, I'm just really upset, really upset. You know, silica is not good for the lungs, dust is not good for the cars, blasting is not good for the foundations and the water. None of this is good except for Whaley's pocketbook and anyone else. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Tim Nobles?
Good evening. Tim Nobles, 1910 Laramie Trail.
Yes, sir.
I'm in a Pine and Rosa subdivision.
Yes, sir.
My issue I'm bringing to you tonight is the camper situations that are allowed on residential lots. I have a neighbor there that's got two campers that she's renting out to some people. They've got a permanent deck mounted on it now, and there's an illegal sewer system hooked up there that, I dropped off some photos to Ken Glover in Environmental. If anybody wants to see those pictures, he has copies of those pics, okay? So my concern is, it's in a small area, they've got an illegal sewer hooked up, and I went to inspections and voiced my concerns with them, and they told me to come see this board and express my displeasure with what's going there. This should not be allowed. This is a residential area, and now she's built, there's an illegal home built there, there's not even an address on it. They built it on a weekend. There's an illegal septic system put in that was built on a weekend. So I'm just coming to you with frustration, I'm against a brick wall, I'd like to see something done, Father. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Joe Green?
Joe Green, 181 Painted Sky Drive, Dantridge. I watched your video of last month's meeting regarding the sheds that are going up very close to our house, and I have some concerns I'd like to share. I've done enough building in my life, I've built three churches, I've pastored one of the largest churches in our state for many years, over 25 years, 50,000 square foot of the building. I know what it takes to build a church. I was very concerned when I heard the gentleman building the sheds, talk about how they wanted to do things right, but it was after the fact. I'm concerned, they mentioned it made me use for two weeks only during summer camp time. I've run summer camp programs, I can tell you that those buildings are not compliant with camp programs at all right now, especially everything I've seen and heard. So I guess my beef would be, first of all, why would a facility like that continue to be built when they don't have proper documentation right now, when it's not being inspected and so forth? The precedent that I think is being set for this community is a little bit frightening. People are going to be able to move in, build whatever it is they want to build, and then apply for a permit because they think, at least, that it will be granted them. So I would just encourage all of us to maybe look at this more closely. I'm not sure why, there's never been a cease and desist order put on that until this can be resolved. I think there's a lot of issues we're dealing with here. I know you've heard all the statistics, people are quoting what's going on and how many properties they own and all that. I have a major concern that what we're being told may not be truthful. I think that's very clear from what I saw in the videotape last month. So anyway, that's my thing, that it's very close to my house. Obviously, we love Dantridge, we've been here nine years now. We would never want anybody to be, you know, left behind or left out, so to speak. However, these properties, and I understand there's at least three more sheds that are going to be built on the same property, and I'm just not sure why we're just allowing it to happen. Anyway, that's my complaint. Thanks so much.
Thank you. David Barker?
David Barker, I live at 1128 Blazer Point, and I'm concerned about the Grace project for a number of issues. You know, the definition of a shed is used, is to be used for storage. When you look it up on Google, it has a little picture there of something you would buy at Lowe's or Home Depot. What they've done is not a shed, nowhere near that. And the problem there is, you know, who is Grace? That seems to be the $64,000 question that's out there. Do you guys know? Do you know what they're doing and where their money's coming from? That's a big question, a big concern in our community. You know, you know, they've built, and now they ask for forgiveness. You know, growing up, I was taught it didn't get you anywhere, it just got you in a lot of trouble. So, you know, that's, that just opens a slap in the face to the builders who build in this county. They follow the policy and procedure, they go pull the permits, they fill out the paperwork. You know, they don't start their projects until they get those things in hand. So for you guys, just let this continue is a solid slap in the face to every builder in this community, for those who do it right. You know, the other thing is, you know, the tax exempt status for a church or a Christian missionary ministry, you know, that's important to those people. You know, if you're wanting to have that tax, tax exempt status, you don't go and do things the way they've done it. You don't go and do things as backwards and then ask them for forgiveness.
Yes, sir. Line your sir.
You know, the people in our, our area built there because we love the area. You know, we, we love the farmland, we built there because it's rural. You know, the other thing is, we built there and basically rely on a board like this to be judicious in how they let people build in our community and to stop things that are not legally done. And, you know, these guys were at this last meeting, and the lady there on the board, and she gave them a long list of things they needed to do, but yet they're still out there working on the property, still working on the houses. You know, why? Why was that not stopped? You know, once you open Pandora's box, you can't stop it. You know, that sets a precedence, and that precedence is everything lawyers need to bring suits.
About 30 more seconds, please.
You know, they've lied to you, they've lied to the community, they circumvented policy and procedure, they circumvented pulling the permits, you know, to me, they need to pay the price. The whole thing should be bulldozed down. It should not be left standing. You know, if you leave it standing, then you let Pandora's box be open. The other thing is, most of the houses in our neighborhood only perk for three bedrooms. These guys said they're gonna have 50 to 100 people in there. How many bedrooms are they gonna need?
Your time's up, Mr. Barker, but thank you.
Hi, I'm Bill Villars, and I agree with what David said almost extensively.
Give us your address, Mr. Phil.
Sorry?
Your address, please.
Bill Villars, I live in Indian Creek Co., I'm just down from the 2251 Jim Henry Road, two sheds, now a camp.
No, you're, you're, where you live, your address.
2202 Arrowhead Drive.
Okay, thanks, sir. All right.
Grace asked county officials for permits to build two sheds. Instead of sheds, Grace quickly built two 3,000 square foot plus buildings, complete with bunk beds. The building plans Grace used were not submitted with permit applications like the rest of us have had to do. At the July 23rd BZA, Grace changed the number of buildings from two to five and used from sheds to camp for 100-plus adolescents, including sleepovers. The BZA confirmed that camps are not allowed in the current A1 zone, so a zone change to RR would be considered. A change to RR would have allowed disparate building types, including camps, hotels, and resorts, to be built in the backyard of a community that's mostly farmland with many single-family dwellings, including two separate subdivisions. Many residents were outraged because these disparate building types could seriously harm the community and drive taxes across the county even higher to address big gaps in infrastructure, utility, and emergency services. Many residents expressed concern that RR could heighten crime, security, fire, medical emergency, and other risks made worse because emergency services are insufficiently resourced based on our phone calls to them for RR in this remote location. Nobody wants a massive deadly Gatlinburg fire to get started, or a camp child drowned or dead from a serious injury because emergency services couldn't help fast enough. A1 to RR would have also set really bad precedents, the worst, any builder can build any building type anywhere, and county officials will change or bend the rules enough for occupancy, or will face a discrimination lawsuit because we'll set precedent. Zoning board decision not to change A1 to RR should be finalized and communicated quickly to help reduce some anxiety. A big remaining concern is that nobody can know how these buildings will really be used, even if approved in A1, because Grace appears to have lost credibility during the building permit application process. Open borders compound the risk to residents. U.S. Congress and government agencies, including the FBI and Homeland Security, issued several warnings. Three of them were terrorist attack risk is high, sex trafficking risk is very high. In fact, the Department of Homeland Security Inspector General just issued a report that 450,000 unaccompanied children were lost between 2019 and 2023.
Mr. Barker, about 30 more seconds, please.
Millions of illegal aliens need homes, many are military eighth men, and do you want these buildings in your backyard? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kathleen Villars, 2202 Arrowhead Drive, off of Indian Creek Road. We and other concerned citizens are opposed to the buildings being put up at 2251 Jim Henry Road, and also opposed to a zoning change from A1 to RR. Here's a quick summary of some of the reasons why. One, the builder, Grace, got a permit to put up two sheds, no septic, no well, no habitation. Two, instead, the builder put up two buildings approximately 3,000 to 3,500 square feet. Now, they want permits for septic, well, habitation, for up to 100-plus people aged 13 to 19 in what he's calling a church camp. Also wants to put up three more buildings like this on the same parcel, that would be a total of five buildings. Three, the buildings were put up extremely rapidly, bypassing the needed local and state permits and inspections. Work continues, even today, on these properties with workers continuing to be observed there. Four, the buildings are in A1 zoning, which only allows one home per parcel. There's already a home at that parcel, 2,400 square foot home built a number of years ago. We heard discussion of possibly rezoning the parcels from A1 to RR, rural resort, and again, this appears to be a very undesirable change with high risk to our neighborhood, and setting a precedent for other commercial resorts to come in and build almost anywhere in Jefferson County. Five, the builder claims to be affiliated with a church group. At the last meeting, he said Forest Glory Ministries. I looked and looked, there's no church group locally by that. Are there some in the U.S.? You can find a few locations, yes, and then also internationally, especially Africa. Six, the July 23rd BZA motion, in that meeting, the BZA meeting on July 23rd, a motion was made and passed that confirmed that no church groups are allowed in A1. Yet, Grace contractors appears to still be on track to have church camps held there. Bunk beds have been seen inside. Seven, a conflicting point is now when you look, 2251 is being advertised as a short-term rental, hmm, on a number of vacation sites, Expedia, Booking, et cetera. So what is the builder's planned usage for these buildings? Is it a church camp? Oh, no, maybe it's a short-term rental, or is it something else? Given how the builder changed...
Ms. Villars, about 30 more seconds, please.
Thank you. Changed the usage from a church grant, church camp, and advertisements now to short-term rentals, it's impossible to know the usage of the buildings and what it will be. Next, we're concerned about the capacity of the volunteer fire department supporting these buildings and to cover these buildings. In conversations with Eric Crawford of the Chestnut Hill Fire Department, he said these buildings are way above our capacity. No one, no one had contacted him prior to my call a couple of weeks ago. And to add to this, we're informed that fire departments will come in, pump the water they have on a one or two tanks, and if that's not enough, the buildings burn down.
Thank you.
I just have one other quote on. So is it a...
Your time's about up, Ms. Villars, okay?
Actually, I have 15 more seconds, sir.
Okay. My watch is official right now.
Is it? All right. Do you want me to stop or can I finish one?
Go ahead, finish up.
All right. So is it a misunderstanding due to the language barrier? We didn't think so. Note, the builder owns 90 properties, and as we look at it, does he really have a legitimate builder's license or not? We suggest this builder be vetted and looked at, and where is all the money coming from? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mocaz Barry?
Is it? All right. Do you want me to stop or can I finish one?
Finish up.
All right, so, is it a misunderstanding due to the language barrier? We didn't think so, note the builder owns ninety properties. And as we look at it, does he really have a legitimate builder's license or not? We suggest this builder be vetted and looked at. And where is all the money coming from? Thank you very much.
Thank you. MacAsbury.
MacAsbury, one-one-two-two West Temple Valley Road, Danbridge, Tennessee. I was gonna talk about the quarry, but I think it's been enough now. So, I think Jefferson County needs a good noise ordinance. There's a lot of issues going on here that if you had noise ordinances in place that would keep people from doing a lot of things on their property that maybe it wouldn't be so annoying to their next-door neighbor. And I think Mr. Renault there has been working on that with the city of Danbridge. They're going through that process right now, so he might have some good information and expertise in that to help us get us a good noise ordinance. The other thing I want to talk about is our Jefferson County zoning and the lack of enforcement that needs to be addressed. There's a lot of people in here that's not happy with a lot of things going on here. And I think our zoning was right, it would help with that. I mean, if you look at all the things that are allowed in A-one forestry, the one I really like is the grocery store. You would want to wake up some morning and open their grate and put in a great big Engels in your, right next to you in what was an A-one facility. So there's a lot of things in A-one that if they were taken out and put in commercial, the appropriate commercial zones or in industrial, then you'd have to go through the rezoning process, and then people would get a notification of what's gonna go happen to them next door. So that would help a lot of what some of these other folks have talked about. And that thing is the enforcement. I know that the Rock Quarry was given a cease and desist order for it to stop, but they've not stopped. I can tell you that, every morning I get up, they're not stopped. You can hear the trucks coming in and out there still. And they've also added another going on right across the hill. So, you know, we don't have any enforcement, we don't have any means of holding their feet to the fire. You know, I don't know if anybody goes out and looks at this, we're talking about these people. We hear about all the shed. You know, usually there's a lot of inspections on a shed like that, particularly if it's gonna be used for, it's not a, it's gonna be more like a commercial type thing where you're gonna have a spare of different people coming at different times. So our county zoning needs to be worked on. We need to get the stuff out of A-one that doesn't belong in there and get it in the appropriate spot. And we need to come up with some way for enforcement and some consequences for people that don't follow the rules. And the other thing I have is about the Danbridge urban growth boundary. What I have is this new piece of property they've developed, starting to work it on at the quarry, is gonna be in the urban growth boundary. And right now, correct me if I'm wrong, you can put an industrial in Danbridge, you can put a concrete plant in. That's correct.
Yes, sir, I'm really not supposed to ask you that.
All right, well, anyway, I thought that you could put a concrete plant in an industrial zone in the city of Danbridge. So if they move out there and they get, if they start this and then Danbridge, it's in the urban growth of Danbridge, then these people can move right in and say, try to get a rezoning and say, okay, we want a concrete plant. So here we are, if we live next to this, our park is fairly close to where this will be, and there's some people that live right next to it. Then how do these people that are living in the county, who do they go to to get, to discuss about what this is gonna do? Do they go to the city of Danbridge? And they don't have any electoral sway over the officials in the city of Danbridge, do they? So, I mean, and we're stuck out there in the county, we're trying to fight that, but we don't have any power over the people in the city of Danbridge that are the ones that make the decision about what's gonna happen there. So, anyway, that's my speech.
All right, thank you, sir. Jim Fox.
Good evening, folks. Jim Fox, nineteen oh-nine Adeling Trail. One quick question is, I actually filled out two forms, one for the BZA, one for the planning commission. Did I need pick and choose, or what are we gonna...
Is it about the same subject in both?
Different subjects.
Different subject, okay. I can put you on your other one, I can... I can put you in planning as far, if you, for one, and if you wanted to speak now, then... Is it over the same subject?
No, sir, it's different.
Okay, let's do, let's do this, let's let you do the one, I guess, on the Grace Contractors, and we'll do the other one there for planning, okay?
Okay, that's fine. I think the Grace contracting deal, I think it's been well represented. Kathleen and a few others have spoken very well about it and the issues. And I realize it's not on the agenda, but the BZA stated several county and state violations and were essentially given a stop work order. They are continuing to work. So my question is, did they get the permits? Because if they didn't get rezoned and it's still A-one, and there's a building on the property already, so if they got a permit, how are they operating in violation of the BZA orders? This guy's been, he's been in business for ten years, so he can't claim he didn't know what he was doing. The church cannot be found or recognized if it's not registered with the state. Again, we have found that he's listed on booking.com as a short-term rental. So what is his true goal here, his end goal? I understand he's talking about having it subdivided into several A-one plots, but he's gonna have to get a variance because the houses are too close together because the setbacks ain't gonna work. Again, it's retroactive because the buildings didn't get inspected, and that's why he asked for sheds so they wouldn't be. By hearing he still plans, even as he subdivides it in A-one and makes these different parcels, he still plans to make a church camp out of it after he's been denied a church camp in A-one. I would like to, you know, update from the zoning compliance officer what's going on. He's not here, but... Lastly, but, you know, I hear a lot of talk about, well, we need codes enforcement, or we need a codes enforcement officer, and that we don't have, we kind of put together some qualifications and whatnot, and that it's not in the budget for. I would say right here, right now, give him a couple considerations, I will volunteer for the job.
And next I have Dawn Preston, Ms. Preston. I think you're on the agenda for a rezoning, is that correct, Dawn Preston?
Yes.
Okay, so you really don't, you'll have, you'll have an opportunity when that comes up on the agenda to speak. You didn't really have to fill one of these out, okay?
Oh.
I assume that's what, is that what you're, are you, because you're nine thirty-one O'Hare, you were the one on the agenda, you're asking for the rezoning, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, you'll get to speak when that agenda, when that item comes on the agenda, okay? All right, okay. Next I have Amy Fox, Ms. Fox here. You've got here that you want to speak on short-term rentals, you want to do, okay, now, okay.
That's all I've got.
Okay.
Amy Fox, nineteen oh-nine Adeling Trail. Good evening. There is a saying, if you're lucky enough to live on the lake, you're lucky enough. That's no longer true. I live in Ponder Ranch, Ponderosa Ranch neighborhood. There are a hundred and sixty properties with a hundred and ten different owners. Out of that hundred and sixty, ninety-four have a livable structure. So with ninety-four livable structures, thirty-nine residents live on-site. That's less than half. Another fifteen have been identified as short-term rentals, but we believe that number to be higher as we continue to dig into this issue. We have restrictions on our deed to no businesses. But according to lawyers and the State Supreme Court, that is too vague to keep short-term rentals out. We could try to develop an HOA, but with the numbers provided, we are already outnumbered by absentee owners, which include numerous from out of state. As a citizen of this county, I'm becoming a minority in my own community. I've worked hard to achieve my home and my property. I live here, I grocery shop here, I buy gas here. I go to doctors, lawyers, saw small businesses. I support Jefferson County year-round. I am not just here for three days boosting the economy to a few industries or buying up properties over their value to make a buck off someone else. I realize the importance of tourism, and yes, we need it, but the citizens of Jefferson County deserve the upper hand when it comes to the quality of life. You are allowing those that do not live in this county and possibly the state to run the county. This committee is charged with the duty of representing the best interest of the citizens of Jefferson County rather than out-of-state and absentee owners. My ask of you is to take an immediate action and begin laying the framework in regards to regulations of short-term rentals. Zoning, saturation, codes enforcement, tax enforcement. Citizens of this county want to keep the country in the county. That's unachievable with a short-term rental on every corner in every neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Ms. Star, you had two of these?
Who? Did you say Star?
Kim Star?
Yeah, I was told I had to turn in two. I can really deal with this one.
Okay, is it, it's both the same thing?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll get you, go ahead and let you come here then, so.
My name is Kim Star. I live at one-eight-one-five Rich Press Drive in Danbridge. I moved in one year ago today into Jefferson County, and I moved here because of what Jefferson County has to offer. It's rural, it's agricultural. The people who live here are amazing. You can drive down the road without having too much traffic, just all of that kind of stuff. The one thing, one of the things that I truly enjoy about these meetings is that you open them in prayer. In that prayer, you are asking for God's guidance on how to proceed with items for this county. And I ask that you truly pray on the items of what you are hearing about, of what the citizens are concerned about. I have never been involved in local government until I moved here, and it's only because I'm so passionate about the fact that I don't want it to change. It's been spoke about before. You asked the people what they wanted, they told you what they wanted in very clear terms, based on what I've heard. The people who gave the survey said they had never had response, the number of responses per capita. One of the main things, like, we've all obviously talked about the same things over that we're all concerned about. But I guess my, my point on it is, things are being done backwards, and you're dealing with people with a lot of money. Okay, they're coming into this county, doing whatever they want, however they want. And if you think a cease and desist is going to stop them, it's not. What it's going to do is bring in attorneys, and the county's gonna get sued the minute you guys try to start putting a stop to whatever it is they're doing. They're not gonna walk away from these million-dollar properties that they're building and these construction things that they're doing. So Jefferson County is gonna have to start getting ready for some serious lawsuits, in my opinion only. But it seems to make sense that when there's money, they plan on continuing to make money. They're looking at, I'm sorry if I, I'm not sounding, trying to sound negative, but little Jefferson County that's very rural and saying, we can walk all over these people. Again, my opinion only.
Okay, about thirty more seconds, Ms. Star.
A lot of the citizens in the community want to be involved. I get the fact, there's only a limited number of you, and this county is blowing up with everything that's going on. So maybe start getting more of the citizens. You had one person volunteer already. Somehow or another, form committees, form, like, put the word out. You have a lot of intelligent residents, people who lived here twenty-plus years. They're passionate about where they live. Get them involved, help, have them help you to do your jobs the way they need to be done. Thank you.
David Maxwell.
Hi, David Maxwell, eleven thirteen Laser Point in the Rainwater Cove subdivision. I'm here to express my concerns about the two sheds at twenty-two fifty-one Jim Henry Road. It seems that the people building these sheds for His Grace or Glory Ministries have not done things according to the rules. They got a permit to build two sheds, but instead built two large homes, and that is deceitful in line. The property already has a house on it, they are calling it a church camp. Where is the actual church located? Is it even in Tennessee? We can't find one here. These, there should be no zoning changes allowed to these properties. The shed should be torn down. And I can't help but wonder what kind of church would act in this manner. Again, no zoning changes, the shed should be torn down. And if, because if in the future, changes are allowed, it's just gonna open up a can of worms, service their buy property, do whatever they want, I'm there to expect you guys, yeah, sounds good. Here's a stamp of approval, let's move along. So we need to change that, we need to stop this right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think the others I have requested for planning, per se, is what they had on their, on their forms. So we will address those at Planning Commission. Thank you for your comments. We'll move to the first item on our agenda tonight, which is determination if a welding shop is allowed in an A-one agricultural forestry zone. I think this is just, there is, no one here I'm specifically asking for this. Okay, sir, he didn't have, they did not have your names down here, so. But I think, basically what it's gonna be is, is this, is that it's not necessarily your property, okay, that we would be discussing this, any decisions that we would make. This would apply to all, the whole county, okay? So, for that, so unless, so it's not really necessarily your, your particular property, okay? If you want to come up and speak to that, but what I'm saying is, any decision that would be made on this would not necessarily just apply to you, it would apply to everybody in that, in the A-one zone. Does that make sense? Okay, all right. So, before you, on the agenda tonight is, is determination if a welding shop is allowed in an A-one agricultural zone. And I ask if you had read the comments there from this, and if you want to read your comments, or I can read your comments in, or has everybody had an opportunity to read them in regards to this item? I think the main point is, is that basically there's no definition in here for a welding shop. That's one of the things that we would have to make determination on, and what type of business that this would be, and what zone did you think would be appropriate for. But basically, he's asking if it's appropriate in the A-one. And that's what you, that's what your task is, is to see if it's appropriate in an A-one zone.
Would it matter if, I'm just, it's for my family, and I'm not wanting to have employees and stuff. I just want to have a little family business.
It's just personal, it's not employees and everything.
Right, but it is a business.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, okay, that's, it would be a business. So, like I say, it's, it's, it's not pertaining to where you live or anything else. Determination that we make here is determination for the whole county. That's what it would be, if this board so that makes that determination. Questions?
Would it be close to being the same as a beauty salon in somebody's home? I mean...
A beauty salon can be a home occupation as well.
Right.
I think...
Can I say something?
Yes, yes.
So, there's not a definition in your zoning ordinance for a welding shop? And unless you have, you know, criteria for what that is, how big is it, how, how many vehicles come, what are the onsite impacts? Are there onsite impacts? Do you light it? Do you have noise? Do you have delivery pickups? What's the daily traffic count? What is your onsite storage? And unless you identify those things and you say welding shop, you may have an in-house, very small operation. But once you cross that threshold, you're looking at, at what, at what point do you stop? But I, that seems to be an overriding concern of your zoning ordinance in general, is that there's a scale of massing of buildings, and by not establishing what that threshold is, you don't have the ability to tell him yes in an industry like, and I, you and I discussed Oshkosh, that's him. It is a welding shop, it is a massive welding shop. But by not having any criteria to evaluate, then you don't have any, you don't have any grounds to deny someone with a much larger operation. Now, if you wanna, I mean, your zoning ordinance to describe, to define what a shop is, to the shop, to, to establish criteria of minimum size, maximum amount of traffic, pickups, et cetera, et cetera. That's something you can do, but this does not accomplish that.
And that would need to be done through planning. Uh, if we're, if, if you make the determination that you're gonna allow there, and you're gonna put conditions on it as far as the scope and everything else, that would come through planning. So tonight, basically, it was, is it, but the question is, is that, is it as, as written in, in, in here, based on what he's wanting to do? Is it, is it currently allowed? And it doesn't specifically state that it's currently allowed, based on that. It's not to say that, that, that planning may decide that, okay? But what she's saying is, is that somewhere along the line, we need to develop the scope and just saying it is, and not saying how much. And that's basically what it boils down to.
So you need all those specifications met through the Planning Commission, right?
Well, once you, what you, what you, once you define it, and as far as it goes, and then you say, then you're gonna make a determination based on the scope, as far as it goes. You may come in and say, okay, uh, a one-employee shop, per se, may be allowed in an A1 zone. But then you may say, more employees, or a certain-sized building, whatever, you may say that, that it may, it needs to go somewhere else. And then there may be conditions as far as, uh, you know, the number of employee, employees that may be allowed there and everything else. So those are some things that you wanna take into consideration, I think, uh, on this.
But the request tonight for the BZA is to look at the allowable uses in the A1 and determine which one does it match? And, um, there are repair shops for jewelry, watches, clocks, shoes, appliances. But I couldn't see anything else in your, in your allowable, uh, in your allowable items. The, to do, what I'm suggesting is, you're talking about major zoning amendments, which the BZA does not have authority over.
Questions? Are you opposed?
Well, it doesn't specify that you can have that.
It doesn't, no.
Right.
And that's, I watched what we're saying. If you think it's something that you may want there, that has to go to planning, the Planning Commission, at that point in time, to make that determination, and then they may wanna put conditions on it.
Right.
Okay. And that's what needs to be done, really, first, in my opinion.
Yes.
So...
So, can I ask a question?
No, ma'am, no, I know.
So what, are you looking for a motion to move it to?
Either a motion, basically, to say at this point in time that it is not allowed, or it is allowed. And then it could be put back on the agenda again, if, if that's something that they want, you wanna proceed with, for the next month, to be advertised on the Planning Commission to deal with.
I make a motion to not, and go with the Planning Commission to clean this up.
Alright, the motion is to deny, is to deny a welding shop allowed in the A1 zone with the procedure to, uh, to be determined, uh, at, at planning.
I'll second.
Proper motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Okay. Okay, next item is a variance for a garage to be placed in front of the house at 430 Berry Cove, Dan Ridge, Jenkins Farm, number sixty-seven, by Mike and Pam Lane.
We are here.
Okay.
We have her back.
The last month, we were asked to have a survey done, and we want the garage, and to check with ATC for power line clearance, and we have both of those.
You had no comment on this one?
Nope.
Okay, alright, so here we go. Everybody looked at this and understand what they're asking for? Basically, they're asking to place their garage in front of their house, which basically says, says here that we have in, in our zoning guidelines, that that's not the case. The other thing is, is that you also need a front setback, don't you?
What?
Yes.
Yes, sir. They need a ten-foot set, front setback based upon that. So the question is, is that, uh, I think there was other information, maybe that's not on this map, is like, is where the actual location of your septic system is. And the way I think it is, it's behind the proposed garage down the one-side property line down by the driveway, correct?
I can give you this.
Yeah.
It was last month.
Yes, and, so I, I looked at that. So basically, there was no way for you to go back, because you would encroach over your, your, your septic lines there, okay? Uh, the other thing is, is coming down the existing driveway to get the garage into the back of the house there, is that basically, I think, what, we have a propane tank, and, is it your septic tank?
The septic tank is right there, and the propane tanks are...
Which then did not leave any room on the other side to actually access the rear of the property. So that left you with the front of your property there. But what I don't understand, the, the, I, I, I understand that part, okay? But I don't understand why the garage couldn't be scooted back some, so that you didn't have to have a ten-foot setback off the, off the road.
The way that the property is angled, it's, it's, it, we could try to move it back, but the way the septic tank and the power pole's there, we need ten, a ten-foot setback from the power pole. So if we come further, closer to the house, it'll encroach onto the leach field.
Okay.
That's about the only place on the whole property where we could stick it and be in compliance with the, the power line and not on top of our leach field.
Okay. Everybody understand what he's asking for?
Yeah.
Okay, so actually, there's two variances. One is, is to allow the garage to be placed in front of the home, okay? The other is, he needs a ten-foot variance on his front setback. And he's asking this because, on one side of his property here, he has septic lines that are there that he can't encroach on with his garage. He can't get behind his house because of his septic tank and his propane tank, okay? And there's not, I, room on the other side. So that's, that's why he's needing to, to ask for this variance.
So there's no other possible place he can put it, actually?
The, on the other side of the driveway, that puts it right in front of your house there, is, is, that's not a viable place?
On the, uh, no, on, then it would be right outside our front door.
Yeah, but that's not, I, I mean...
It's still in front of the house, but...
It's still in front of the house, but...
Directly in front of the house.
But it gets you off your set, it gets the setback. We, we don't need a setback there. It does get you off, it's, you still need the variance in front of the house, no matter what, for this. Yeah, the variance in front of the house is, that's, he didn't have any choice, if you allow it, for that.
Were you aware of that when you revealed it in the house?
We, we bought the house as it was, and, um...
Oh, it was already built?
Yes, and we were told that the septic was on the other side. When we purchased it. That, and so, so we were gonna build it right there. And then when we came and we had the county come out and do the leach build and everything, we found out that the septic tank was not on the other side of the house. It's where, we were planning on building the garage in the first place. So that changed everything, and we tried to find, and this is the only place that we could put it. Other than right directly in front of the house, but... That doesn't help much, you're gonna reveal your garage right in front of your house.
Thoughts, questions?
Yeah, I know. I'll make a motion that we grant him a variance to put a garage in front of the house, okay?
And have the ten-foot setback.
With a ten-foot variance on the setback.
With a ten-foot variance.
So that's a motion.
That's a motion.
I got a proper motion, now, I need, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second. Any other discussion? Okay, on this. Bein' done, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You'll need to see, come and see Tim.
Yes. Thank you.
The next is a variance with side setback for a new garage that has been constructed at Lot 113 Raspberry Drive, New Market, Berry Ridge, by David and Ashley Tharp. The Tharps here? No, then I would, I would make a motion that we roll this to the next meeting until they're here.
I'll make a motion.
I got a proper motion?
I'll second.
Second. All of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that one will be rolled. Alright, the next is a front setback variance of twenty feet on the front, on the front property line for a new house to be constructed at 124 Monty Vista in Severeville, the Peninsula subdivisions, lots forty-eight and forty-nine, by Jennifer Sheenan and Thomas Nagy. Yes, sir, mister, is this Mr. Nagy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, can you explain exactly what he's, your need?
Our house right now is on Lot fifty. Uh, we just bought forty-eight, and we're trying to combine forty-eight and forty-nine to put a garage in a guest house on it. But if I don't gain that twenty feet, I have a cliff in the back that is gonna really prevent me from getting this done.
So you own Lot fifty?
Yes, my house is currently on...
And this is Lot forty-eight R?
Forty-eight and forty-nine.
Okay, so this is forty-eight, forty-nine combined?
Correct.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
So you're asking this because of topical issues?
Yes. It's pretty steep, really steep.
Everybody understand what he's requesting?
And I live on a den ed, den ed, dead end in a cul-de-sac, there's, there's nobody going by there, really. I have some neighbors across the street, their lots are vacant, but it's a den ed, in the cul-de-sac on the den ed, so...
I guess what's surprising is that you got a lot there, you can't build on it.
Well, it came up for sale when I bought it.
Okay.
And, you know, now I'm going through the process, I figured while it was up, I'd grab it, and, uh, you know, hopefully I can do something with it.
So when was, when was this, do you know when this property was combined?
It hasn't been, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, you're asking for it to be combined?
Yes, I'm asking.
He's asking for the variance, so he can get it combined.
So this, okay, so he's asking what's...
Because the, the building is gonna be into the setback of forty-nine, so if I combine forty-eight and forty-nine...
Is it constituted in the regulation?
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm wondering if it's kicking in. We have new guidelines, is when you re-serve, divide properties, as far as that goes, and you create new lots, as far as that goes? That basically, before this lot can be recorded, it has to be shown on a, there's a, there's an existing building site, uh, that's, that's available. And how that site is, is, is accomplished is up to the people who are, uh, doing the subdividing or developing. And they would have to show on here that there is a viable building site for this.
To combine the lots together?
Yes, sir, yeah.
So I need to get it staked out?
Yes, you're gonna have to have, what it is, is that, because this is gonna be a, a, a new subdivision, okay? As far as, even though it's combining two lots in existing, you're creating a new subdivision. There are new guidelines state that basically on there, that the surveyor's gonna have to show on there that there are suitable, is a suitable building site, or one that can be pre, prepared for a building.
And that's only if I combine them? If I just put it on forty-eight, do I still have to go through that process?
No, sir, because you're not subdivided your property at that point in time.
Then I'll just ask for the one on forty-eight, and I'll build on that lot, conforming to the side setbacks?
Okay, so you're...
If I could get the variance referred.
Okay, you'll need to bring that, you'll need to bring it back with us for that, okay? A flat back for forty-eight showing that there. Because right now, you're saying this is forty-eight and forty-nine combined, right?
Well, they're not combined yet.
I know, but you, but it doesn't, it's not distinguished here on this map, that you presented us. All we're looking at is Lot forty-eight R. We, we don't know where Lot forty-nine is in relation to forty-eight.
You should have both of them. That is both of them. There's a red line down the middle dividing them right now.
No? We don't, we don't have that.
You see a little red X, it's back, back to the line is. You don't have that on yours? It is on it.
Well, it's a little, I see a little red triangle, but I don't understand what that, uh...
That divides the properties. That's the property line there.
See, typically, when we see these, that there will be a line there, and it will be a dashed line showing...
That was the first one I brought in, and then I was told to get it to where the red line is there to divide, to join them. But the, the first survey I have did have that.
Okay, so, so that, that was correct. You would have to have this, basically, to, uh, come, to, to come before planning, to ask for those to be combined, okay? But what we're saying is, in order for you to do that...
I understand, I understand.
You, you have to have, you have to have that, you have to have that building site established on there, so...
But you don't see the line on there where I could go to forty-eight?
Well, I don't know where...
I mean, that's, I mean, mine is so small, but I can see it on here. Same with you, my bad.
Well, that's it right there. Okay. So you, he would need two variances, because here he's basically, he's probably not off of the... Basically, what you're gonna need is, you're gonna have to have two variances, if that's, if we go with just, uh, Lot forty-eight.
Okay.
Because basically, you're right on, he's got you right at the intersection.
Right, I would just move the property, conform to the side setbacks, as long as I could get the front setback.
Okay. Yeah, but he's, he's not moved it yet.
But he just said he's gonna move it to conform to the side...
No, I'm, I'm gonna...
No, he's gonna move the garage.
I'm gonna move the building to conform to the side setbacks.
Yeah, he's gonna move the garage.
Not the, not the property. I don't, I don't want the properties the way they are.
So basically, then, what he's gonna be asking for is, is that, for Lot forty-eight, which is an established lot in this subdivision, uh, he needs a, basically, a twenty-foot setback off the front, off of the, the right-of-way of the street. And also to move the garage, uh, seven and a half feet off the other property line there as well. That would be, that would be stipulation, if you so desire to grant him this variance.
That variance would include both of those, Terry?
Well, if he's gonna move the gr, he would definitely have to move the garage, okay? He needs to move the garage seven feet off the existing property line in one direction, and then he needs a variance in on the front.
For twenty?
Twenty feet. I'm not disputing the topography, I know how it is over there, but besides that, when you get back to the back, this is a late-front lot, it's pretty steep. So, uh, it's just it. That's the reason we have these new guidelines, so we know how to address this. But here, in this instance, this is already an existing subdivision. So...
So we're moving, he's wanting for, because of... So we're moving, he's wanting for, because of topography?
Yes.
All right.
He is requesting.
And we use, we always grant almost all.
Topography is a thing, it's, it can be a hardship if you grant a variance off of.
I'm like the motion, we accept. Give him the variance he needs.
So which is a twenty-foot variance?
Twenty-foot variance.
Twenty-foot variance.
On, for, or lot forty-eight only?
Yes.
Okay. And also move the, the garage at least to where there's, is seven and a half feet off the, of the existing property, side property line.
Right.
My garage instead of a new house, just like says new house.
I know. Uh, I say, and that's why I'm saying he didn't, you know. But if he subdivides the property, he's gonna show us that they're living in the building site there, and he wouldn't have needed, he wouldn't have needed the variance then. But it is, is right now, since it is just only lot forty-eight, that way, uh, that's what, so that, we, we got a proper motion for that. Any other questions? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
You second? Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So what you got is, is that we've given you this, this variance due to topography.
Yes.
Uh, based upon, you need a twenty-foot on the front, okay? And moving that, the, the proposed garage, seven and a half feet to the other side of the existing lot line between forty-eight and forty-nine?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. And then, so were you on, were you on plant, is he on planting as well? No? Okay.
This is the first time.
So... How are we gonna give him a variance on something that's not approved then? Uh, on forty-eight R?
I think that Tim thought they would just look at the one lot.
Because it's a two-loter. Okay, I got you.
Because it would normally have to come through as a two-loter.
Yeah, okay, I got you. Okay.
You're good. Thank you.
Well, that leans us to no other items. So I look for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion.
Proper motion?
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
You ready? Are you ready?
Me?
Well, I hereby call it over the Jefferson County Regional Planning Commission. I'd ask, uh, with all members present, separate Commissioner Morgan. Uh, I'd ask the members that had an opportunity to review the minutes for past meeting, any change or corrections, please note, otherwise I'm looking for accruals. Got a proper motion?
Second.
And second. Any other discussions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Uh, citizens input tonight for the planning commission. I have some sheets here. David Nelson?
I'm David Nelson. I live at four seventy Hudson Road, property plans. I want to share a few thoughts on two of the zoning resolutions that are on the agenda tonight. The first one is the C-three wholesale and warehouse commercial district. I believe that this is a much-needed expansion for our commercial zoning districts. It will preclude what otherwise could be more intense industrial uses now and in the future. Plus, it will provide for bumpers on it to go between existing R-one and A-one property and future industrial property. This zoning district will enhance and improve our current commercial and industrial zoning foundation. This C-three zoning district is needed. The second thing I want to address is RV parks. Much of the Jefferson County properties on day one really is used only as personal residential property. You see this all the time. And presently, RV parks are allowed in A-one. There is nothing agricultural or residential about RV parks. They are simply commercial enterprises. Just like hotels and motels, RV parks never should have been allowed in A-one. They are inducents to adjacent A-one personal homes. So this resolution simply removes RV parks as an allowed use in A-one and makes them a permitted use in C-two where they belong. This ru- resolution is a must to protect our homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you. Marion, not?
Uh, Marion, nine four forty West Main Street in Dandridge. And I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but, um, thank you first for, um, thank you that we're on the zoning motion, uh, last month for voting down the request to allow camps in A-one. Listening to the whole discussion, uh, with the builder, points out some deficiencies in our zoning resolutions. And I know I wasn't here last month, but I did watch it online. When combined with many other issues that have come before this board, including I-one zoning and rock quarries, it is very clear that you need to start taking a hard look at what is in our zones and setting clear and strict standards. Doing that would be good for developers and residents, and it would reduce the number of people who would bring controversy to your board. I listened to what the builder said. If I heard him correctly, he stated the ball. He has a seven-acre parcel with a house and a well. He's been having a picnic there once a year for a church group that is based in another state. He works with the group internationally in nine countries. He wants to have more buildings so that one hundred children ranging in age from thirteen to nineteen can sleep on this site for two days at a time. And he wants to allow other groups to use the site for similar purposes. A number of questions occurred to me as a result of his words and Ms. Baldwin's statements. They are, where are these children coming from? How do they get here? What are they doing for the two-day visit? Where do they go when they leave here? Is it true the builder has already built at least two more buildings of at least three thousand square feet each on the site without any permits or inspections? Is it true he's failed to get necessary permits from state agencies such as TDEC and has thus involved our county in guilt associated with his violations? If this is a church-involved property, is it exempt from property taxes? Is it true he also owns other properties in Jefferson County and many properties in severe Knox counties? What has been our experience with his other properties? Have we contacted other counties to find out about their experience? What kind of vetting can be done to protect neighbors and the children involved in the camp? If negative information turns up, can the county refuse to work with him? It seems there's already some fear of the developer. Has anyone been intimidated or threatened during this process? And what do you plan to do about this? Do you intend to allow, allow unpermitted, uninspected buildings to remain? And if so, will this set a precedent that encourages others to ignore our zoning rules? I hope you will have Ms. Baldwin guide you in the proper way to fix our zones so that this county will not continue to be targeted. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are any questions in case anybody wants to answer?
Mike Foley?
Uh, good evening. My name is Mike Foley, three eighteen Oak Vista Drive in Dandridge. Uh, I love reading Mr. Steve Marion's local history articles in the Standard Banner. There was always much to learn. In his recent story, underwater photography about TBA photos before the dams were built, one item in particular really stood out. It's the middle of World War Two, and the town of Dandridge is facing an existential threat from the rising waters of Douglas Lake. From the article, meeting on January sixth, nineteen forty-two, the Board of Mayor Alvin took a course of action that might have made all the difference in his negotiations with TBA. A new planning commission was appointed. Its members were to follow up on the board's request the preceding September for a survey to determine the feasibility of a dike to save the town. The new commission was told TBA would have an answer in four weeks. It was March when TBA and the Corps announced plans for the dike. At the meeting, the TBA chairman made it clear that the capable way in which the planning commission had presented to the TBA the disruptive effects of the reservoir upon the town had a great deal to do with the conclusion to build the dike. So a previous generation has left us an inspiring, inspiring example to follow. Without the luxury of time, a planning commission acted decisively and not only saved the town, but made a favorable impression on a federal agency that could have easily ignored the proposal. Fast forward eighty-two years, and once again, we face major challenges in our county without the luxury of time to deal with them. I have attended these meetings for two years now. There's been much discussion, but in my humble opinion, now is the time for decisive action. We are fortunate to have many valuable resources available, such as the completed county survey, the long-range planning committee, and an engaged citizenry. We are especially blessed to have the expertise and enthusiasm of our planning advisor, Ms. Catherine Baldwin, who has frequently stated her willingness to help. In conclusion, I would like to ask two questions for your meeting tonight. The next county commission work session is in forty-nine days, on October fifteenth. What items do you plan to put before the commissioners? And since your regular meeting agendas are often full, why not schedule one or more workshops between now and then? Our problems have solutions if we are committed to finding them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, next I have, uh, Mr. Fox, Jim Fox, again. About regarding short-term rentals?
Jim Fox, eighteen oh nine Athlete Trail. I was wanting to touch base with these short-term rentals again. You know, they are destroying neighborhoods, you have increased traffic, increased use of public services, you know, all-out partying, trash, trashing the neighborhoods. Uh, you know, talk about, you know, putting cameras in the bedrooms and bathrooms at Airbnb's, had thirty-five thousand complaints about, uh, cameras in the bedrooms and bathrooms. And, and these images actually include children, including children. And, uh, so the guests, they, they find these things and they report them to the, uh, to the Airbnb site, and Airbnb says, oh, let me tell the host about it and see if we can't get it straightened up, versus, uh, reporting it to the police department. So they're giving the perpetrators a heads-up on, uh, cleaning up the evidence. And so cases, uh, you know, there's no background checks being done, so, uh, there's cases where there's been sexual predators hosting these, uh, short-term rentals. We're just asking for a Pandora's box here. My experience, you know, uh, is guests complaining about neighbors, actually even calling, uh, sheriff's department because they don't feel comfortable or safe in the neighborhood. Uh, I've got four homeowners in my neighborhood right now that are actively looking to move out of my neighborhood because of short-term rentals taking over. Uh, and some of them are actually in the gallery tonight. Takes up housing inventory, raises prices, you know, there's approximately fifteen hundred in this county right now. And so folks from out of state are coming in, buying up these houses and buying up these properties to make a profit and make money. And, and so it's taking up the inventory. And they're also realizing that they can make more money renting these things out on one or two nights than they can on a monthly basis.
That's thirty more seconds.
So... Again, you know, my neighborhood, there's thirty-nine floors full-time, thirty-five, maybe four thing about moving. There are twenty S, uh, short-term rentals now. Again, it could be four in a row since these people moving. There's been three in three months. It won't be long that there won't be any local folks in my neighborhood. And so I also would raise the question, you know, when's the last time you drove down Vision Ford and saw a house, or drove along the beach and you see all these hotels, and just the one little house?
Your time's, I'm just talking your time's up, so, okay. Thank you. Kathleen Villars?
Kathleen Villars, twenty-two zero two Arrowhead Drive, Dandridge. We and other citizens are very concerned about zoning, what is allowed in various zones, zoning enforcement, and short-term rentals. We would not want builders to come into our county and ignore zoning rules. In my previous comments, I did ask if a certain builder had been vetted and checked out. Well, I was curious, and I thought I would take a couple of drives. So I first went over to Sevier County, and I went to a resort called Four by Grace Cabin Resort in Sevier County. The resort consists of a number of private roads, mainly Bethlehem Way and Jerusalem Way. As I drove up the main road, a ridge, my reactions were I felt shocked, sickened, angered for what was happening to the area. Not preserving the natural environment. Essentially, the mountain ridge was scalped. It was apparent that most of the trees had been removed from the ridge. I did not see any erosion control fencing. There were spots where the road was cut in, leaving a very steep and bare slope. Certainly with the next rain, a lot of erosion could potentially occur. What was built there? A number of mega-sized cabins with little space between them. One could almost reach out and touch the neighboring home, or shake hands with the neighbor's hand in the neighboring home. The resort has approximately seventy-five properties on small postage-size lots. Let me give you two specific examples. Twenty-six thirty-four Jerusalem Way, a mega cabin valued at two-point-four million dollars, approximately five thousand eight hundred square feet with eight bedrooms, nine bathrooms, and it is on a lot size of zero-point-two acres. Secondly, seven-seven-six Bethlehem Way, another mega cabin valued at one-point-eight million dollars, four thousand eight hundred square feet, six bedrooms, seven baths, this one on a lot size of zero-point-one acre. Some of the mega cabins have already been sold, some to investment groups, mostly out of state. What's the intended usage? Might these be slated for short-term rentals? What you can do to see this area is to go on Google Maps, an aerial map, and it'll show the very close concentration of mega cabins that are being built on a stripped mountain ridge.
That's pretty much it.
Is this what we want for Jefferson County? Perhaps someone should vet the builder. A second trip I made was over to Cobb County, Cosby, Tennessee, to the Marinatha Resort. Seventeen homes, all mega cabins, and they're all being bu- built on small parcels of land also, each about three-quarters of an acre. And I could read specific reviews if I had a little bit more time, but three specific reviews commented of how the buildings are falling apart, faulty electrical, and non-working water systems.
Ms. Vlogge?
Is this what we want in Jefferson County? I don't think so. I'd ask the commission what they plan to do. Thank you.
Thank you. William Villars?
I'm Bill Villars at twenty-two oh two Arrowhead Drive, and I'm gonna speak about Jefferson County land use plan, which I think is causing a lot of turmoil in the system right now. The primary purpose of this commission is to improve the quality of life of Jefferson County residents by implementing and maintaining a land use plan so that Jefferson County will evolve in a safe, efficient, low-tax cost, and harmonious way. That's right out of your twenty-ten land use plan. The purpose is not being achieved right now. Instead, the zoning appeals board is deciding big zone change requests that could ruin communities in the county, set bad precedents, strain emergency... communities in the county, set bad precedent, strain emergency services and infrastructure, and put roadblocks in the way of a land use plan development. Residents and county officials should not be burning so much time and energy pushing back to stop potential harmful zone changes. Even worse, a zone change dartboard approach could set bad precedent. I spoke a minute ago about an A1 to R2 zone proposal that would allow builders to put any building type anywhere in Jefferson County and then get officials to change the rules or face a discrimination lawsuit due to the precedent. Jefferson County is a diamond in the rough, really is. Chipping away with haphazard disparate building zone changes is counterproductive. An unexpired, high-quality, forward-looking, zone-aligned land use plan supported by residents could turn Jefferson County into a real gem. Some believe a plan is underway, but contact with officials and residents have no idea and nobody's seen it. It's understood that a high-quality land use plan is complex and expensive to design and develop with resident buy-in, yet critically important to the future of Jefferson County. Therefore, external experts with a proven track record will be needed. Catherine Baldwin is a great addition based on what we've seen, but you're gonna need more help, given the urgency of this to stop some of the turmoil in the county. County commissioners are struggling to manage the budget already. Nevertheless, we will urge commissioners to assign a high priority and a sufficient capital budget for this planning commission to create a new plan over the next several months. After all, the purpose of any government jurisdiction is to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of its residents by properly planning for future growth and development. A land use plan with resident buy-in is critical to achieve government's purpose. In the meantime, the temporary moratoriums should be established for all disparate zone change requests. This would allow residents and officials to focus on higher priority issues, including land use plan development. Pressure is being applied on all you zoning folks because more revenue is needed for businesses, et cetera, in the county. We get that, but throwing darts at a zone map and randomly locating businesses won't work.
About thirty more seconds, Mr. Villars.
Thank you. But throwing darts at a zone map to randomly locate businesses won't work because future costs will offset any revenue gains for many years. A quality plan would also integrate low-cost, efficient ways to drive revenue growth. Thank you.
That being said, I think that's all for citizens' input. We'll proceed to new business. First item on there is a rezon request from R1 to A1 for property at 931 O'Hare Drive, Dandridge, and Tarras Hills. Don Preston, guess if you would come up? It's Preston.
We purchased this property last year, and our contract said, there was an old burned-down mobile home there, we had to have it called off. We bought the property, our contract says we could put up whatever we wanted there as long as it was a thousand square foot, you know, either stick, build a house, or put a mobile home there. But we decided to put a mobile home there. We spent $30,000 here in the property, putting water, electrical, and septic was already there. And then we bought this home, and we've been waiting six months for it to be built. It's a brand-new 2024, $100,000 mobile home, but it's not a double-wide. And it says, when we went to, the Clayton Homes went to get a permit to put this house there, they said it had to be a double-wide, and our driveway was actually what it started, according to the zoning people. But beyond our driveway, there's three other, three or four other single wides already in there. So we just want to put our house in there. And our house cannot actually even be single-wide, so you wouldn't even know there was a house there because it's eight hundred foot back or six hundred foot, and the woods hide everything. So we just want to put our home there. And we've already bought this house.
Okay, does everybody understand what his problem is? The property's currently zoned R1, which does not allow single-family, no, it's not allowed single-wide mobile homes. Okay? When this development was established, at that point in time, they allowed single-wide mobile homes in that development, okay? So now then you have a conflict of what the development allowed and what zoning allows. And the only way that basically they can get to put this single-wide back on this piece of property is it would have to be rezoned A1 because that is the only zone that allows for single-wide mobile homes. Did you agree? Am I missing something?
Nope.
Okay. So that's their dilemma, right there.
And there's other single wides in that same zone, maybe.
And probably what it is, is that they could very well be grandfathered?
Is there a single wide, is there any improvement on the property at this time? Is there a current mobile home or?
No.
No.
So it's taken.
We built a pole barn, you know, that eventually I'm going to store our, you know, stuff. And, you know, it was, we got permits for that, we had to, you know, go through that permit process. But there is a pole barn there, and we spent a lot of money getting this excavating. And now we got a $100,000 home that we have nowhere to put. I know that ain't y'all's problem, but.
If you look at this, there's A1 around it, but this is all, for some reason, was rezoned to R1. I think it was so that they could probably get some smaller lot sizes when they were doing it, per se. That's my guess. It's outside the growth boundary. I don't know if that was taken into consideration at that time, from that standpoint right there. But basically what we'd be doing is we'd be creating an island within an R1 zone for an A1 parcel. That's why we're going to be born down to.
And I think the whole subdivision is full, there is nowhere, you know, there's nowhere to.
That very, you know, that very well could be the case, as far as that goes. The best thing that could happen here is that whole development be rezoned to A1. Because I guess here's my question, and I've gone back and looked at this, as far as that goes. Okay, so we're saying that the only place that you can put a single-wide mobile home is in an A1 zone, but yet you have a development here that was R1 that allowed single wides to go in, and they have currently gone in there, okay, per se. So if there are single wides in there, would it not be better to take all that out of R1 and put it back into A1? If you have a single-wide mobile home and it's destroyed, and that's what I was looking at there, if it's destroyed by fire or whatever, is there anything in there that is grandfathering under zoning that would allow them to replace that home?
If it's existing, yes.
If it's existing, okay. If it's existing.
So what's the lag time on the?
The grandfather.
If they, how far out?
Three years.
Three years?
I don't understand what.
If the home burnt within three years, you would be grandfathered to go back with a single-wide mobile home. Is that correct?
Within three years.
Well, it wasn't our problem that burnt, it was.
It doesn't matter.
Oh.
Okay.
It's the use. So there was a single wide on there?
I don't know what was there.
Okay, so you don't know what was on the home?
No, it was burnt beyond recognition, it was nothing but a metal frame sitting there.
Well, was it a double-wide frame? Was it a single-wide frame?
I mean, it was overgrown with bushes and trees, and they come in, it cost, we paid $8,000 at the trailer room, I mean, the burnt Eltran. So, I mean, is it not in the records what was there before? I don't know.
Well, I know, but we don't have that because we didn't, we didn't know we were going to, all we know to address is what you've asked us to address. What we're trying to make is determination is, is that do we need to rezon this property or were you grandfathered in based on what the use was before?
Oh, so what would I need to find? I need to.
You need to find out when it burnt or when?
Oh, I think it burned ten years ago.
Oh, okay.
It was burned a long time ago.
Okay, then that, then that.
It's out there vacant for forever.
That doesn't, okay, so that basically then eliminates your grandfathering then. Okay, so.
So can I cry or beg or?
When did they remove it? When did you remove the old foundation?
Burned that one last year. Yeah, Jackson Realty, we bought the property from Jackson Realty last year.
The use was a single-wide trailer, it sounds like.
But is it, is the use classified until they remove that foundation or that metal frame? Is it still in use or no?
Or was it, it didn't function as a home?
The single wide, the presence of the single wide is the grandfathered use.
Okay, so, but I'm asking you, does the metal frame constitute the presence, or does the trailer itself constitute it?
Let's say it was still the trailer sitting there, and it had been vacant for ten years, and then it burns. You can replace it. So the fact that the foundation was there, you know, that's, it's an interpretation.
Well, you're the state planner, so that's what you make the big bucks for.
That's horrible.
Who would interpret that?
The Board of Zoning Appeals.
Yeah. So we, the question, we have this question before us, and then another question has arisen that really should come before the BZA.
If they wanted to interpret that, they, because it, I mean, state law is silent on it, it doesn't, it doesn't say. In fact, the fact that the grandfathering used to be one year, and about four years ago, the legislature changed it to three. So they obviously, the intent there is to preserve uses, I mean, three years is a long time. So the structure was still there up until last year, technically.
Yes. Until he removed it.
So does this not need to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Well, this question doesn't. This is a question, should it be rezoned?
The zoning doesn't, but I mean.
Well, that's what we're trying to decide, as far as it goes. He may not need a rezoning.
That, exactly.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what we're looking at here. He may not need rezoning. The question is, is who makes that decision? Is it based upon the fact that the home is still there, and it basically, at that point in time, he considered grandfathered, which means he could come and get a building permit and put the new home on? If the grandfathering question is in question, then it would need to come before the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thanks, Gary. In our zoning book, though, it does say mobile homes shall be allowed to replace legally non-conforming mobile homes. Such replacement is conducted within six months of removal is what our zoning regulations say.
And the state preempts that.
And so, and not eventually.
So if it's non-conforming, then you can replace it with something that's conforming. Okay, so which in this case is.
But it says six months, so I don't know, we don't, I was unaware, it's three years.
Yeah, it's, it's three years.
Three years.
It's three years.
So the Board of Zoning Appeals would have to make the determination, and basically, if that frame was there, it constitutes that home still being there until it was actually removed, whatever portion of that home was there, I suppose.
And based on the number of single wides around there?
Yes, I know, there's a lot in there.
There's a lot in there. So, I mean, from the aerial.
I have a question, do I need to submit the pictures later on or?
Well, you made for the Board of Zoning Appeals, here's, I think our thing is, is this, is that we really don't think you need to rezon your property to go through with this. I mean, you can't because you have the right to do, you have the right to ask to do that, but I'm not sure that's going to be pertinent to you being able to do what you wanted. Okay.
Are you saying I can move this house in there without rezoning?
Possibly.
Oh, possibly.
Yes. What we're looking at is, is that.
We're trying.
Because there was an existing single-wide mobile home on this property, and you removed that, okay, as far as that goes, you had three years, basically, to replace it.
We just did it last year ago.
Well, then you've still got two years, your clock's still running on you. But to make that determination, what we're curious is if Tim can make that decision now, or if that needs to come back before the Board of Zoning Appeals next month for them to say, okay, you're grandfathered, you can go back. Now, that being said, you can always request this rezoning, you're on the agenda to request it. I can't, you know, here's the thing is, this board here just makes a recommendation. We don't rezon property, you'll have to go to county commissions, get that rezoned, okay? But, you know, based on even what our, say we recommend or don't recommend, they still, you still have the right to take it to them. But there's a possibility that you may not have to go through that, through that step.
Yeah, I won't do that if y'all agree to, because everybody goes aye.
Well.
Well, we can't do that tonight.
Oh, you can't do that tonight, I'm sorry.
It has to be on the agenda to be voted on.
So the question is this, is tonight, is you're here, you can have us to vote on this, or you can opt to pull this off and not have us vote on it, and come back and then for the Board of Zoning Appeals, if Tim does, makes that determination and has to say, here's what I have and my grandfather, and if they say yes, then you're good to go. And you don't have to go through, you don't have to go through the rezoning process.
And if they say no, then I have to?
If you say no, then you'll have to.
On October fifteenth, maybe?
Yeah. But I think based on what, what we've discussed here tonight, if it's state law, there's a good possibility that you might be grandfathered.
The timeframe would be faster grandfathered. Timeframe would be faster grandfathered.
It would be, yes.
I didn't hear that.
To get this accomplished, it would be faster, because you could be done, you could be done by next month, and actually, that Tuesday, and that next day, you could have your permit to put your home in. If we go through the rezoning process, basically what boils down to, we make this recommendation, and now, and it depends on when you would get on the agenda, it could be four months for a county commission even hears it. You're not guaranteed then, so.
Well, I'm going to go in the first round.
Okay, so basically then.
I don't understand.
Why don't you withdraw your request? If they vote, if you vote to deny it, I think it's dead for a year.
Yes.
So if you come back, why don't you withdraw it, therefore, there's no vote, and then you come make applications to the BZA to incorporate that the grandfathered status of the structure still being there. And it does look like, I was just looking on the deck, so imagery.
Yes, you can see right there is probably where it was sitting at, right in here. Okay. All right, so, do you understand? Okay.
Sort of.
All right, so, by pulling this tonight, we will take a vote, which means that you could be turned down right now, which means you would have, it would be a year before you could come back and force to ask again. If you pull it tonight and you come back next month, you want to come before the Board of Zoning Appeals, and you also then want to get on Planning Commission for this same thing. If Planning Commission, if the Board of Zoning Appeals turns you down, you could start this process over again, that same thing for the rezoning, as your next option. So that, we're not, I'm not trying to deter you in any way, I'm, we're trying to give you the best advice that we know that we can give you on this.
Can I know what your vote is, Richard?
If you pull it, we're not voting.
If you pull this, we won't vote. That's what we're trying to tell you. If we take a vote and we say no tonight, okay, on the rezoning, all right, you can't come back and ask again for one year. If you come back next month, you're going to be on the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is the meeting before, just like you set through. And that's where you're going to ask for your grandfather. If you get your grandfathering in at that point in time, even though you may be on the Planning Commission to ask for the rezoning again, sweet up the process, you won't need it. You won't need it, is that what?
I see you pulling.
Pulling, okay. All right. So.
So, let me ask a question for clarification.
Okay.
As far as pulling it, are they pulling it completely, or are they asking it to be rolled to next month? Because they pull it completely, they're going to pay another fee?
Okay, can I ask?
Or you could make a motion to defer for a month.
I mean, they could ask to roll it for a month, and it's still, they wouldn't have to pay another fee, correct? Ms. Stephanie?
Yes, that's right.
How about this? Ms. Chairman, I move to roll this to the next meeting.
Okay, I got a proper motion?
I'll second.
In a second. Any other discussion? Everybody understand what's going on? Okay. All those voters say aye?
Aye.
He opposed? Okay. So what you need to do is, she's automatically going to put you on the agenda next month for this, but you also need to get on the BZA, so you would need to talk to Tim and Stephanie, make sure you get on the BZA agenda. All right? And I think, I think hopefully this may solve your problems, okay? I'm just sorry I had to go in a roundabout way, but.
That's all right.
We just needed to make sure that we.
It is what it is.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
The next item is a revised site plan review for a commercial storage facility located at 1980 East Highway 2570 Dandridge by Robert Delphthal?
Yes, sir. The.
That one's the one that we had. We dropped these the other day.
They're basically the same, and the drain field was moved from the old plan to the new plan. So, I'm basically taking the approved site plan and just breaking the buildings up into more manageable building phases.
So, we get adopted this site plan most before?
Yeah, so that site plan's been approved. I'm just basically taking it and putting the buildings into building phases. So, the center building was once one big building and now it's just three smaller buildings. Just to basically start and afford to build them.
So, this is basically a revision of an existing site plan?
I have the original, if anyone wants to see it.
I know we don't have adopted fire codes, but these buildings would have to be 20 feet of length if they're not connected.
Unless they're doing rated walls with the, the wall through the roof.
Yeah. That's true, but we don't have.
Have fire codes.
It doesn't. Nor do we have commercial.
You, you do have.
We don't have, we don't.
Do you have distance between buildings? I mean, that was the least of my worries.
So, for your.
I mean, I looked at, I didn't realize it'd been reviewed before.
Did you want to see the original approved site?
No. I'm not going to look at it on the fly. There's no location map. It hasn't shown any utilities or a fire hydrant. I assumed that.
I didn't realize that was all required. I, I, there's a fire hydrant rated from the property.
It's not shown. No parking? You've shown no parking. Do you have an office on site? For surface improvements? Is it going to be paved? Is it going to be gravel?
This was all discussed in the original site plan.
And then, you can ignore my questions if you want to accept this, but. You also have a, you also have in your note four, you reference the city of Athens.
Oh, okay, sorry, that was probably mistaken on the engineer's part.
Have you obtained a, a, a permit from T-Dot to access the state route?
Yep, that's all said and the T-Deck approval is in place.
T-Deck for SWIP?
For, for the water controls.
Stormwater prevention plan?
Yeah. All that's in place.
I remember us looking at it, but I can't remember the details.
Well, don't we have to go off what's presented, though?
Well, we would, because this is basically, it's, he's asking for a revision.
Yeah, but we still need all the, like, the utilities and the hydrants and it doesn't show the measurement between the buildings.
So, I could, I could stick with the original site plan, go into the building department, get my building permit for what I was already approved for. But we're going to go through a whole other process for this? I'm just confused.
You're clear.
I mean, if you, technically, if you're asking for a revision, what specifically has, is different from the original?
It's, it's basically the same plan.
This right here.
Except for.
The buildings up into, to phases.
He's separating him, because he's only going to build, they'll build this one, then build this one.
Yeah, as, as demand.
So, that's, that's his revision.
That's my revision, just, just so I can afford to build in phases.
Yeah, I know.
But if we approve this and it's missing some things that the previous one had, wouldn't this be the new site plan? If we approve it tonight? The old one would be obsolete at that point, wouldn't it?
I can show you the old site plan. I have a copy of it. That was approved. It's, it's the same. Just building in phases, that's the only change.
Truthfully, he didn't even have to come back before us.
I don't.
He didn't, he didn't, there was even, I mean, basically, he didn't have to come back before us, as far as that goes.
When, when you do an amendment to a site plan, is there a threshold for returning to the planning commission?
I don't think so.
The original's not even that old.
You do have the original?
Yeah. There's about six copies there.
We can see here, he had one building, basically, he's wanting to put in three, basically, right there, so.
The first building's built. Going closest to the roof.
See, basically, what he did here, he's, he's done this, but he's, he's, that's just a firewall. I mean, I'm just, I'm not sure that, well, wait, let's see.
How good is doing this? Construction lungs probably don't require.
So. But these buildings are going to be bigger.
Right.
The, the, the narrow ones on the side?
No, the ones in the middle.
They're, the, the narrow, the narrow ones on the side got a little bit smaller and the, the ones down the center got a little bit bigger.
Went from 65 feet wide to 90 feet wide in the middle.
And then the sides went from, I think, 45.
He shortened them. He shortened it, giving it more room there, yeah. They, they were wide, a little bit wider, but they're shorter.
Does that affect the drainage at all?
It can, but if it's his, if he's got a, a SWIP now, is it hard surface or are you doing gravel?
No, it's gravel.
It's just gravel, okay.
Yeah. This, this is flat as a pancake, what this is bad.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, so, the main thing is, is if the water runs to the existing ditch, that's where it's going to run to. But if he's going, the only thing, only really thing that he had to worry about on drainage is just the water he collects off these buildings right here. And as long as he detains that to a certain extent, because the rest of it's, the gravel part's just going to be permanent surface, so.
Right.
Although this from here is probably going to be paved. I, I, I thought we had more sheets, because see, like, this is just C2 and there, I thought there was more to this. Like, for drainage and utilities and there were other, see?
So, oh, you're saying that there's a C1?
I, I think there may have been, I think there were more sheets to, to this plan, is what I'm saying.
Like a more detailed map?
Well, the back, the back buildings are just, they're, you know, open RV stores. The only building that has utility is the, is the front building. That's built. So, I have my water in and my electric and. We're getting ready to put in the drain field and then the rest of it is just cold storage.
So, like I said, I think, I mean, I think this is just a revision of that. And basically, all he's doing is, is he's shortening the buildings and he's separating. I think that's the only difference that I can see.
Pretty much, yeah. I mean, I'm just trying to build them, like I said, I, I just can't afford to build that huge building, so I'm going to build a smaller one first and then it's demand allows. And we'll get the next one.
Didn't that work?
Okay. So, everybody understand? Okay. So, originally, we had this approved site plan, which has drainage and the location of the buildings and the utilities and as far as that goes. All right, so now then, what he's come back to ask is, is that he wants to revise the actual building location is what it's going to boil down to. They're not as long as they were before. Before, they were going to be 400 feet long, which now they're not, okay? They are about five feet more wide, which, basically, what it did was it kind of makes, it gives him a better turning radius in the back.
The swing room.
So, that, that is, that is the changes that he's requesting to, to revise this.
So, we're not really approving a new plan, we're just revising the original?
Yes.
And to be honest, look, in looking at it, that revision should have been done by the staff.
Ms. Chairman, I'm going to move to approve this as a revision to the original drawing and the original plan that shows all the drainage and the utilities.
Okay.
In detention.
In detention.
Second.
I got a proper motion, I got a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thanks, sir.
I appreciate your time, thank you.
Next item is a revised site plan for Shauna Reed, 1806 West Dunford Valley Road, Newmarket. This is the first time we've got to see this. Okay. So. We've got to make. So, you're adding, what you're wanting to do is add some pavilions. Two pavilions, is that correct?
Yes. All, everything on here was everything that's been presented each time for approval. And then, we take the same drawing, then when we add something, we just put it right over, on top of it. So, these two pavilions, they're just the covered roof, open pavilions. And then, this little building was approved for like green room type stuff or when we have music at the stage for like the artists. This has proven to be too small, so I want to approve a larger one so that we can put bathrooms in there and whatnot for artists when they come. So, the only addition will be this building and these two pavilions. Everything else was already approved.
Everybody see this?
Yeah.
Hate to be fifty. But. I'm going to assume this was not put in by the surveyor? Or did you all draw them or what? How, how did you all, did the surveyor put those in?
No, I, we did those.
Typically, we like for, for that to be spotted and placed on there by the surveyor.
It's actually a license violation.
Yes.
So, he's, he's got his stamp on there.
Altering him.
He's probably not going to go with that, just, just saying.
Now, that being said, does he have to, whether or not he goes in on the ground and does it, or he may just come in and put it on there and just generalize it on his map, as far as that goes. But then, basically, what boils down to is, is that at that point in time, because what happens is, is if, when we approve this, this comes in as public record, okay? And if this surveyor were ever to come in and says, it's not my work, okay? So, that's why I'm saying, it would probably, it would be better.
If I'd have copied it without all that, it would have been okay?
No.
Because we wouldn't, we wouldn't have accepted if it didn't have that.
It didn't have the stamp, but it can't come anyway.
So. That's my suggestion, is, is to go back to him and, and just take him to that and show him, say, hey, this is what I need and as far as that goes. And if it's going to affect anything in any other ways, as far as drainage or anything else, he'll make some notation on there to that.
And so, you've got, you've got that building on top of your electric line, or under the electric line right there anyway, where he's got the electric line drawn.
So, okay, so he can adjust all that and make it to.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want it there, but that's.
Well, is it, are those, are those TVA lines?
No. These are over here, though. There's nothing there underneath those.
Okay.
But they've got, and associated these, but if he's showing the lines, there's at least 10 to 20 foot.
So, this, this line actually isn't even here yet, because this isn't built yet. So, that line actually comes across here, so I'd have to have him adjust that, actually.
Okay. And, and basically, what we would need is, is that when he does this, we need to say on there that this is a revision. Okay? That we need to say that it would be a revision. So.
So, have him do that and then just come in next week.
Yes, so, there's one or two things here. Basically, it's, it's on here. We either need to make a motion to either not accept or accept, one or the other, with recommendations and the reason it's not done so, so. Unless she wants to just make a motion to roll this to next month.
Roll it to next month? Move to roll it to next month.
I got a proper motion and second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six ten. Thank you. The next item's discussion of, it says 20 inch, but it's supposed to be 20 feet straight with, for five acre tracts by Glenn Block and High.
I wondered what that's about.
I don't, Glenn, okay, here you are, Glenn. Slowly getting there.
Okay.
I spoke with Tim about six weeks ago and he said, why don't I just come in and discuss with the planning commission? What my thoughts were about setting up a different classification for county road specs for, I wouldn't call it exempt plat. But typically, what I'm working with is five acres or greater. So, it's really the tension between urban and rural environments. And so, I talked to the roads superintendent and he was all on board. But, but my understanding, two, three years ago, the county changed the spec on all their new county road developments. And so, that being said, is like, from my perspective, in urban type developments, different from a rural type development. I did run off a little study, I guess you can all read it, either smile or. Get everybody one of these. And it had to deal with safety and traffic counts and design criteria. And it was just a, a study, a little history. In the town of Farragut, Tennessee, about seven years ago, I started with larger tract development. Because I could see the trend is a lot of folks hate homeowners associations and like cookie cutter subdivisions. And there was a large trend in East Tennessee for folks to have more of an elbow. They, they want some space. So, kind of the development that I did through five or six years in Knox County in Farragut, we ended up coming up with a separate classification for what a traditional subdivision would be and versus. a separate classification for what a traditional subdivision would be, um, and versus, uh, large, low-density, low-traffic, and trying to create an environment that's more visually appealing. It costs you less on your taxes to, uh, to maintain roads, and it costs you less to develop the road system. Uh, so, the concept is taxes lower, it's good for the environment, uh, visually, it's a better type, you know, if you're doing the, the spat that, what I handed out to. So really, I'm just, Tim just said, "Come here to discuss." I don't know if there's a committee to discuss that with, or if it's a planning commission can sit and approve, the county commission approved. He was not clear on a path forward. He just said, "Come and talk to y'all, who may have questions." So that's what I'm here to, to do, just to talk.
Okay.
Well, my question would be, if this happens, do you guarantee that once that road's taken over the county, forevermore and in perpetuity, that that five acres will never be subdivided?
Well, you do restrictions that you would not allow that. Um, so if someone violated the property restrictions, they would have lawsuits with the people in there.
I understand, but I'm asking you, cause we take the county roads over. The commission asks for the citizens to put in money to pave the roads, whatever. From now and into perpetuity,
Well, it would be legally, they can't.
Can you guarantee that that will never be subdivided?
Legally, they can't. I'm not saying that someone could come up with a gun and pull you up at the bank, but legally, we can stall it, so...
They do have a way, though. Okay. We do have a way. Because once, if we establish that you, you, you come in with us with a, a low-density development, say five acres, and we do approve this, so the first individual who wants to come in and do the five acres, we're gonna make them do the whole road 24-foot. Because, this, it would be no different, because what we're saying is, is if you're gonna, if you're gonna go with, with a higher-density development, just like we do anybody else, and the road's not to the specifications for that, we're gonna make you do the whole thing. So you're gonna have to widen the road, and you would have to pave it.
Yeah, we...
To subsidize the five acres.
Legally, where they couldn't, is just they can't get the right of way to do it. I mean, you're talking about private property rights.
The right of way's gonna be there. The right of way's gonna be 50-foot wide. All they're gonna have to do is add 24-four, more foot pavement. I mean, four more feet of pavement. And we would have the right to do that.
So have you, have you presented a subdivision plat?
Yes, this was approved back in June.
Yes.
Uh, so, basically, they looked at our, we had like thirteen lots with the infrastructure.
A final plat of lots.
Yeah.
Yes, and he has not constructed it.
And he has requested, um, acceptance of the roadway.
No, he has not.
I mean, but he plans on it.
Well, he, he, he has that right to do so, if he wants to do, if the county wants to take it over. But it, it has to be built to the county's specifications, as of right now. So what he's asking is, is that for this right here, is that us to have, basically, two guidelines. One for a, uh, a higher-density development, and one for a, a lower-density development. In which case, then, we could say, "Okay, if you have everything in there, it's over five-acre tracks, then we may say, 'Okay, we'll let you do a 20-foot street.'" But, if you come back and you subdivide that, and you've changed the use, and we could come in and, and basically, we could say, "That's fine, you give us our four-foot strip all the way."
Well, I think the low density's one thing, the five acres or greater, that, to me, that's a trigger, if it's five or greater. The study here was just based on traffic counts, as you say.
It was, I, no, it was...
And how many lots are you subdividing?
There are fifteen, there's eighty-two acres, and there's fifteen lots on eighty-two acres.
Eighty-two lots were way low.
So...
So, anyway, it's to consider, I think it's a, it has visually a much more appealing, uh, countryside urban feel than a subdivision out in the country. It just doesn't fit nature as well, so it doesn't look as good. I've done forty subdivisions through my career, so I'm used to doing subdivisions, but this just looks better, uh, feels better. Uh, I think it offers up a, a different look and feel from a subdivision out in the country. So it's like, I'm asking, there should be a difference between an urban-type, um, subdivision from, from a rural. There's distinctly a difference. And I started talking about Farragut and West Knoxville, they developed the plan, and ultimately, it came up to five-acre tracks or greater. They had 20-foot wide roads, you could do the grass swells. So they, that was a process. Uh, they required, if you had utility water, that you still had to do a waterline extension, cause the fire marshal wanted fire hydrants there. So that was kind of their high bread, and that was a longer, it wasn't a formal process, it took years for them to come up with that spec. Uh, so that's just my limited experience in working in East Tennessee. I have been working in this county for thirty-nine years. I love working here, and, uh...
Okay. So if you remember, when we changed this, we, we changed it because we've gotten some, from feedbacks, saying that they, people wanted sidewalks in their, in our developments, okay? And so, basically, when it came down, I went to the county road commissioner, Mr. Tipton, and asked him, and he was not for this, because of our maintenance nightmare. And, uh, cause he said, "I don't, I just don't have the manpower to maintain it." So we compromised. We said, "What if we give a four-foot strip along the road, which would be dedicated as a walkway i- in, in these developments?" And, which made perfectly good sense for one-acre lot subdivisions, okay, per se. Uh, in this case here, what he's asking for is, is that, "I'm not doing a, a high-density development, I've got five acres or more, could we have a s- a separate standard to allow just a 20-foot street paving instead of 24-feet?" That's really, that's really what it boils down to.
Yeah, there's no structural changes, it's a width change on the road. And, talking with the roads superintendent, he prefers that, and it's friendlier. Anyway, that's my take on it, and you all may have studied it, but that's my opinion, and, so I'm here voicing my opinion. And, uh, Tim felt like I should have the opportunity to come here, and we'd all discuss that and ask for your help.
Okay.
Will, will you do the amendment? Cause he's right. I mean, the, um, the tendency is to, um, make the, the width of roadway, um, of, of stronger nexus to the number of, um, cars on it. And Farragut, they've got 400 vehicles a day, and...
That was a Baltimore study, that wasn't Farragut study.
Oh, this was a Farragut?
That was, there are several studies, if you go on the internet for safety.
Uh, so, but the, but the threshold is 400. Now, there's a, a trip generation for houses, it's 9.2 trips a day per house, which takes you to 138, um, which is pretty dang low. Um, but, I, have you granted any variances from...
This is the first one.
Since you've had this request?
Since we've had the guideline, he is, he is the first one to build, and the road coming in any developments.
Well, it's very expensive to build, and what, you know, the, you'll probably save 20 to 25 percent by making the road, uh, on the road. Your grass swells will cost you as much as your concrete curves, but it aesthetically, it looks so much better, and you don't have as much concentrated water, and, and, you know, it's a, it's a much friendlier development. So it's not huge, it just, it does save money on the front, which allows people like me to pay the farmer more money for their property, um, or the people buying on the hill, you know? So the economics are...
Don't use the economics as a reasonable request of variance.
It manages to the private sector, as well as to the public sector. The public sector saves on taxes, and they save on maintenance. So those are the arguments. Now, the safety report that I put in there is just slowing people down. That's all that's saying. If you got a small traffic, and you can slow them down, and one way to slow them down is not build huge interstates and rural environments.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a 12-foot travelway. Um...
So, he, he's not really asking for a variance. What he's asking for is, is if we were going in and, and, uh, actually change our guidelines to address larger, uh, larger tract developments as far as road is. That's, that's, that's basically the gist of it.
Yeah, different classification.
Yeah, for that. So, you know, if you're, if you've got a development, and let's say it's anything less than five acres, you're still gonna be subject to the 24-feet, okay? But if you've got five-acre tracks and above, because here's the thing is, is that, actually, on five-acre tracks and above, the only thing that's required for him to do is, is to, if he wants the road to be taken over by the county, it has to be built to county specifications. He comes in, we basically approve the road, cause five-acre tracks don't have to come before us, uh, per state law.
Unless you're dedicating right of way.
Dedicating right of way. So, uh, so, but either way, whether, here's the thing is, either way, whether it's, you're, you're giving this road to the county or not, it still has to be built to, to the county's specifications. So, does everybody understand?
Yeah.
Stunned at? So we're looking, so, here's what we would have to do. If this is something that you wanted to, to address, as far as that goes, then we would have to change our subdivision guidelines to address this, uh, this issue. And, and the planning commission has the power to do that.
That would do away with our four-foot sidewalk?
No, it does not. You could li, you could, it depends on the type of, the size of lots that you have in your development. If everything in the development is over five acres, is what he's asking for, or you could say 10 acres, or whatever you wanna do, then he would not be required, he would only be required to pave a street 20-foot wide. If he's anything less than that, then he's gonna have to go 24-foot wide, just like we've adopted. If that's, I mean, that, that's it. And it would be if you feel comfortable with that.
I'd rather keep it to 24.
Me too.
Okay.
We're not actually making this, we're not taking action tonight, right?
We're just discussing this.
Okay.
If you, if you wanted to take action, you do have to hold a public hearing with every day's notice.
Yeah, we would have to do that, yes. So this is just pure discussion, whether or not this board would feel comfortable going forward with, with, with this, to, to revise that, or have a second, uh, set of guidelines for larger tracks.
See, I didn't know if it was appropriate to have a committee to study that, the pros and cons, or if it just come, Tim just said, "Come and speak at the planning commission."
Yes, and, because ultimately, this, this, this board would, this body would make that decision, as far as it goes. Uh, so I guess the question is, I don't know, I mean, we had the discussion here, I guess we could have a motion, whether or not you wanted to address this further, and, and, and come back and set up some guidelines, or not.
Well, even if you've got a five-acre lot, you still got to have room to walk on the side of the road, if there's not a sidewalk there.
Could you separate the sidewalk from the road, like?
There is no sidewalk.
There is no sidewalks.
I know, I'm not talking, well...
That's, that's the reason we didn't do it in the first place, is because the road supervisor, he looks at that as, as a ma, it's a really, it's a maintenance nightmare, when you have separation of that. To me, what happened was this, is when we said, "Okay, if we go 20, if we add four feet to our road, and we dedicate that as a, just as a walkway," he said, "I live with that, because all I'm having to do is just pave it. When it comes time, it's paved." And you know, and basically, typically, you may have to repave a road, what, once every 20 years, depending on the traffic?
Depending on traffic.
So he's looking at it from a standpoint, at that, there, that I, that I'm, you know, I'm not gonna have to do that much maintenance. But if it's a concrete sidewalk, every time a driveway comes in, and it gets cut, and everything else...
Right.
Somebody's gotta go take care of it. So that's why we compromised and said, "Let's do this. At least we have, at least we're giving the people a walkway, per se."
Not a sidewalk, but a walkway.
Well, it's, it's just...
Yeah.
It's, it could be paved, okay? Other side, sidewalk can be paved, everybody just assumes it has to be concrete, but it doesn't have to be.
Yeah.
So just a yellow line to separate the road?
That's not in our regulations.
Are you sure? I thought we had it in there.
I don't think we do.
It's not lined up?
I don't think it's lined as far as separating the four-foot.
I thought, I thought we put that stipulation in there.
No curb or anything.
And we don't, we don't require curbing.
Can you find that out, Ms. Stephanie?
So the question is, do you want to take this further, and come back and discuss it more, or what do you wanna do?
I'm good with the way it is.
Send a form of a motion?
Do we, I mean, do we need to take action on this?
Well, if we're not gonna do, if we're not gonna come back and bring it back up, then I think we need to say, "We're not gonna, we're not going to address the issue."
Okay, I'll put that in form of a motion.
So I got a part of the motion.
To keep it as it is.
That's basically, yes, that's it.
I'll second.
Okay. So I got a motion, and, and a second. Everybody understand what we're voting on?
Mm.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm not on that one.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, the next item is a resolution, meaning the zoning resolution of Jefferson County, Tennessee, presented by Austin Brooks.
So, this is, you know, we've had all this discussion about the campgrounds and everything. This would be pulling campgrounds, uh, out of A1, the A1 zone.
And putting them where?
Uh, I believe they're already in rural resort.
So, what does these articles say that you reference here?
That's from the zoning, from our zoning regs.
But what does the rest of the verbiage say? Is that, I'd like to, like to know what we're doing here, because this has marinas in it, and if you pull them out of A1, where are you putting those? Because I don't see anything down here where you put them back in.
Okay. I just assume have it in rural resort.
Yeah, but, I mean, it don't, it's, it's article, what's paragraph two, Ms. Stephanie?
For article three.
Uh, article nine-eight, paragraph two.
Nine-eight, paragraph two is actually general commercial activities. That's in your C2.
C2. You can't live in C2, right? Or how do, I mean, the marina, is that where your, is that where your intention to put it is? Is C2?
Or rural resort. Why don't, this... Why don't I roll this and get it a little more detailed for you? Would that, we'd still be friends?
That'd be, that'd be helpful, and, uh, and if you're going to rural resort, it needs to be referenced, rural resort, the right, in other words, if nine-eight, paragraph two, is C2, that's not where you're telling me you want to put this?
You want that in a motion, Terry?
Uh, that you want to roll, sure.
Yeah, I, I moved to roll this at the next meeting.
Yeah, I got a motion to roll, that's second.
I'll second.
Second. Alright. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So the next one is a resolution, meaning the zoning resolution of Jefferson County, Tennessee, regarding a new C3 wholesale and warehouse commercial district presented by Austin Brooks.
So, this one has gone through commission, this was prepared by the county attorney, or reviewed by the... This was prepared by the county attorney, or reviewed by the county attorney, but I saw that Ms. Baldwin made some really good recommendations. So I will move to accept this resolution with the recommendations that Ms. Baldwin has made.
So I got a proper motion. I'll have a second before we have a discussion.
I'll second.
Okay, you have a motion second now, and discussion. So the question is, is that since we have no C3, this is a brand-new zone, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay. So what you've got here is, is that these are what you're going, say the prohibited uses are going to be in a three, in a C3 zone, okay? All right, so why do you have prohibited uses then?
So the idea was that a lot of times when somebody comes to get a piece of property rezoned, they have to jump all the way into I1 when they may not really be a heavy industry. And that has caused a lot of issues throughout the community. So I thought this could kind of bridge the gap and better protect citizens, but also help people that are trying to put businesses in our county while keeping the citizens comfortable.
So how did you come up with the two acres lot size? Because we have, what, acre now, I think?
It's, again, it's just, it's, it's a step up to keep it from getting into a big development.
And what would be your definition of major or minor truck repair?
I believe the BZA would make that determination.
Well, or you could define major automobile repair and minor automobile repair. If you define it, which you could amend this by include, then you would establish the parameters for it, and it wouldn't go to the BZA.
And that's what I'm afraid of in putting these things together. We've got, and everybody's complained about it being vague, Austin. Why would we put something vague back in there?
Why would we continue to do nothing? So far, we've done nothing.
Well, I understand, but there's, but there's, we might as well get it right, is just get it done.
Yes, but I think there's going to be something every single time. I think we're always going to be able to look at something and nitpick it.
Well, I'm sure we can, and, and I guess machine shops, when you're talking about that, is that, does that include welding shops?
Again, that determination can be made by the BZA.
Well, see, that's.
Anything that's not specified would go before the BZA, correct? For an interpretation.
It is, but I think that that's one of the problems with your, the length of agendas of your BZAs, and that a lot of your zoning ordinance is very subjective. And, and the whole reason to have a zoning ordinance is to remove the subjectivity of land use.
I mean, if we're putting a new one in, why not, why not put the parameters in and put the stuff in to begin with?
And you could just add a section, another, this is section one, and it has the zone designation. So you could add a section two, and you could enter definitions into your article two, I believe, is your definition section. No, it's article five. So you would just be adding definitions in here of these uses. Prior to forwarding it to your county commission.
Could you have that prepared for us at our next meeting?
Yeah, it, it may be necessary to, I was just looking at this, like wholesale establishments, are those defined? No. Special trade and general contractors, machine shops.
Does that make you more comfortable, Ms. Scarlett, if she goes through and defines?
Yeah, well, if we're going to do this, we might as well just get it right and put the stuff in there. And, and one of the things that you heard, we've heard from the citizens is, well, they don't like the BZA having all the determination on it. So if it's actually down in print, then what, then the BZA doesn't have to make those things.
Okay, well.
I mean, I, I will. Ms. Catherine, what, what do you think?
Oh, I totally agree with you.
I'm just asking.
It, it sounds like that the zone district is needed because in going from residential to industrial, there should be something that is, you know, you can call it light industrial, there's a lot of different names you could call it, but it does sound like you need that tool.
Okay.
And, but if you're going to do that, I would define the allowable uses because we've got to start looking at your definition section and providing definitions.
Okay. Well, based on that advice, Mr. Chairman, I want to amend my motion to roll this to the next meeting and have Ms. Baldwin present definitions for the uses. Is that agreeable, Ms. Susan? Okay.
All right, so we have amended the motion, okay? To roll this to the next meeting for more information. Everybody understand?
And, and to have Ms. Baldwin present. So I, if, if there's any reason that you can't do that, I guess we would just postpone until Ms. Baldwin can provide the definitions for the allowed uses.
Okay.
Like, you don't have warehouses in here.
No. So if we put the definitions in that section?
In that.
If, if we put the definitions in that section, though, that would help our, our whole zoning regs, okay?
Correct.
So we got a proper motion and, and a second to roll this before, until we get more information. All right, everybody, so what we're voting on?
Yes.
You might want to go ahead and see if there's anything else in there.
Okay.
That.
Well, I was looking here, basically this, and I was looking at your building setbacks here. So if, if I've got a lot, and I've got two acres, which is the minimum lot size that I've got, and I've got 200 feet of road frontage, okay? But if I have a house on both sides of me, and I got 200 feet, I can't do this project. Because you're telling me I got to have a 100-foot setback off that, which doesn't give me a place to build. So the setbacks don't exactly jibe as, as far as that goes. And so, that's what I'm saying, you can't, if, I mean, I, I get it, somebody comes in and says, well, yeah, you've got two acres, but if you can't meet the setbacks, then you can't do it. Because I think we have commercial properties right now, areas of where there should be commercial properties, and there's probably residential side of it, and I consider those transitioned properties. And, you know, if that's the case, we have houses everywhere, we would never be able to get any property, probably meet some, meet some of these guidelines. I think that's too.
But you say the property of that side?
I'm saying that the setbacks are too strict.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, so some things that I noticed is, and I gave you a strike bold, I got a Word doc, and, um, one thing, you have a major thoroughfare plan, and so consideration should be given to, in the district, should be located on our arterial major collector as designated in your major route plan. Um, that removes language like the adequacy of the street system to serve the anticipated traffic needs. I, I don't know what that means. Your thoroughfare plan is adopted, and it's a standard. And I made some other just minor changes. I agree that the, if this is going to be, you know, you look at zone districts in terms of off-site impacts, and obviously the higher that off-site impact quarry, the more distance you need, and, but this sounds all like you're trying to give, create a zone district that meets that middle need.
Trying, yeah, bridge the gap, yeah.
So if that is the case, and the, and I realize y'all have a lot of 100 feet, if there's a dwelling unit, but that doesn't address that there might be a dwelling unit. And it gives, you know, if you've got a legal law record, you hope somebody picks a violation on it. So, um, I had suggested at the very back is that a buffer strip is a, that a vegetative buffer, that you, and you, you'll look at my little start, I suggested amending the definition of a buffer strip and be specific of what that is. The width of it, the material that goes within it, and the type of material. So you, you don't have that.
Okay.
And, um.
Can you prepare that for us as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So when you're talking about that, Ms. Catherine, are you talking about amending a buffer strip for everything that we have in the zoning, or just this one?
Well, you, you, um.
Well, now, this would be a vegetative buffer.
Yeah, but, and you.
So I think we're adding.
One thing I looked at was what do you define as a buffer? And you actually have the performance criteria in your definition. You know, at some point, you might want to move that, but it always says 10 feet, six feet in height, and you, you don't have a species, you don't have the amount, you don't have, like normally, instead of saying 100 feet, you could say, you could make there a kind of a rational nexus of, you know, 50 feet, if you provide a 20-foot buffer with six-foot heavy shear evergreens on 20-foot centered staggered. And I'm sorry to throw that at you, but that's the standard language.
Yeah.
And you install one of those, then your setback's only 50 feet. You know, 100-foot, if you can still see it, and that's not, I'd rather have less of a setback and know that there's, your uses don't have a lot of offset, off-site impact, and you can't see it. Rather than having 100 feet that you still see the thing, even if it is bothering you. I mean, part of the visual, you know, part of the, the privacy of a residential, quality of residential is not seeing commercial buildings next door. So if you block those due, and there isn't a noise, smell, et cetera, et cetera, then it's important to establish a really good buffer. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, okay, so in your buffer strip, are you going to be allowed to do anything? Can you park in your buffer strip?
No. It's a visual barrier.
But if you, but, but the buffer, you said, is going to be how wide?
Well.
That's what I've asked her to come back to the house meeting.
Because we, if you're going to come with a.
It's going to be less than you're setting, than the proposed setback.
It is going to be less than the proposed setback, okay? So I guess my question is, is this, is it, so let's say we come in, we say, we're going to have to have a 20-foot buffer. So that whole buffer has to be engrossed in vegetation? Or are you just?
That's what a buffer is.
I, I agree with that.
Does a fence not meet a buffer?
Um, you know, there are lots of ways to visually address off-site visualization. You could do a privacy fence, you could do mounds, you know, so you.
Burms.
Burms. And when you paint the landscaping on top of the berm, you get some undulation to it. Or, you know, you have, you know, if it's 100-foot, you might do vegetation in it, and it's, it's not as much, but it's still, I mean, there are diagrams to this, there's, I mean, this, these are industry standards.
But I guess I'm, I'm going to follow up on what Ms. Terry said. If, if a fence is part of that, is one way to do that, then can they park in that? If it's, if it's spent to be 20-foot wide, because the fence is not going to be a foot wide or two, can, can they?
Because you're going to have your buffer, and then you're going to have your setback. And I'm asking you, is, is what can you do between the setback?
Now, the buffer would go in the setback.
I, I agree with that.
But.
But I'm saying, so if your buffer is here at your parking lot, and here's your setback, this area in between here, can you use that for parking?
Then it's not a buffer.
Yeah, that's, that's my question.
The answer to the question is no.
So the, so you would have to get, even if you use the fence, you got to get 20 feet, 19 feet away from the fence before you can do anything, park or anything? Is that what you're saying?
Um, you've lost me.
Okay. So I'm at the property line, and I put up a 10-foot fence. Do I have to go out 19 feet from that fence to meet the 20-foot?
Buffer.
Buffer.
Nothing can go on in between those, is what you're saying.
Can anything go on right here? If I've got a 10-foot fence that visually blocks?
You mean 10-foot?
High.
Like instead of berm?
I mean, that is, that is so much.
Instead of the trees, instead of whatever, I just put, I put up a big tall fence.
Eight-foot is, yes, well, six-foot is about the highest fencing you can get.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, I understand.
Hypothetically.
I, I tell you what, why don't y'all think about it? And, um.
What I'm asking you is, what's your opinion here? If I've got a fence, can I do anything in that 20-foot section?
And what's your minimum lot size here, is two acres? Two acres, and your uses are, I mean, these, from everything I understand about what you were proposing, was that these uses are not really massive, we're not looking at.
No, yeah, it'd be low, low impact.
You're looking at low impact, I mean.
2,000 square feet buildings is what he's got.
A total of 10,000 square foot.
Yeah. Is it a lot of 100 by 100?
I mean, those aren't big buildings, those aren't big industrial buildings or commercial buildings. So, and, and I, I think you got to consider the uses allowed, what the size buildings are, and then what the off-site impact is. If you're just looking at visualization, mitigating what it looks like, then I wouldn't put a fence, because fences are hard to maintain. You do a wooden privacy fence, and in 10 years, it looks like.
I know, but that's, that's not a, that's not our decision.
Well, so we're back to the vegetative buffer then?
What I'm asking, are we, are you saying absolutely you've got to put a vegetative?
No, I'm not saying anything absolutely at all.
And you got to stay 20 feet away, or can I put a fence up and use this to park in?
I, I would think it would be either or.
Okay.
So do you, can you come back with a fence option and a vegetative buffer option?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, it's, it, most ordinances will say, um, a 10, 10, I don't see 10-foot fences, my God, brother.
I just picked that out as an example, just trying to, trying to get something that's way taller than anybody can look over. I just want to know if I can use that.
I, I think we're looking.
Because when you put, when you put it in a definition, what I'm wanting to know is, is there, can you use that part?
And I understand that in setbacks, you could use, usually, and it's even that is limited, like one, up to one half of a required setback can be used for parking. I don't know what your zoning ordinance is, I'm not that familiar with it. But if you're talking about buffers, it usually is an either or, at six-foot high fence, which is a high fence, or a vegetative buffer. Either or.
And when we're talking about this, and I didn't get clear, and you may have made it very clear, I don't know, but I didn't get clear on when we're talking about changing the verbiage on your back page here. Amending the definition of buffer strip, are you, are you amending that buffer strip definition in Article 5 to a vegetative buffer strip only?
Um, I think that you should specify what it is. A, a fence, it, it, it just depends on how, what your goal is. A, um, a fence, it, it, it just depends on how, what your goal is of mitigating off-site impact for your adjacent residences.
Fence's not gonna do much for the sound.
Right.
As, as much as the-
The vegetative buffer.
The vegetative buffer would, right.
Well, and a fence, the day it goes up is the best it's gonna look. If, if you do vegetative buffers, as the years go by, it, it, it gets better and better looking.
Yeah.
Um-
What about a concrete wall or something?
They're too expensive. Uh, your, concrete walls are extremely expensive, and then in, you're, you know, I think y'all need to think of, um, what you wanna, if you live next door, what you wanna look out and see. And, and again, the uses should be considered because you're talking about kind of a light industrial, is that these are typical light industrial uses that don't have a lot of, uh, negative off-site impact.
Cut you would work.
It would work, yeah. Till the leaves fall off. I mean, just the fact that you've got buffer strip identified, but it doesn't, it doesn't give any parameters for it. So if you're gonna say, you know-
Evergreen, shut them down.
I mean, that's, that's a standard fare. and usually it's a little flexible, like you can do fifty feet, you can do this many, um, uh, plantings, you can do twenty feet and you can do this many. Uh, ten foot is-
Doesn't help that much.
Doesn't do a lot. But i- in order to make the, um, like if you got, you said, is it two acre minimum?
Correct.
And you said most buildings are gonna be two thousand?
Well, that's, that's the maximum amount, that's ten thousand is what he's got in here, which includes the main building and any accessory buildings. Which is basically a hundred by hundred building.
Or you could have multiple buildings.
Well, you could, I'm just saying.
Just can't, can't go over the max of ten thousand square feet.
So you could have two five thousand square foot?
Yeah.
I mean, I just think it, uh, I mean, I strongly suggest that you don't make, uh, decisions today, it was, I assumed that this was for discussion and, you know, talk about these issues and, and, uh, get the details down.
So-
After you've had a chance to think about it.
Well, and if you can come back with the definitions that seem to be-
Yeah.
Okay.
So the, the other thing is, is that, since this is gonna be a new zone per se, do we need to revise our parking guidelines for this new rezone? What's gonna be required as far as parking inside? I mean, a garden center, I don't, you know, along the service spaces. I guess my thing is, is that-
Parking space, don't you?
So somewhere in there, I think we should address how many parking spaces are gonna be required? Is it gonna be based on the use, or is it gonna be based upon the, the size of the building?
Should be based on the use.
Correct.
But the problem with that is if they sell the building-
And the use changes, well-
And the use changes.
Then they may have to adjust.
That's all race-
You would have that issue.
But I mean, your, your parking, what I'm saying is your parking-
Yeah, it's based on use.
Yeah.
So.
It's not based on some designation.
So we're gonna just stick with what we got there on that for parking?
Uh, unless you want to look at the uses and, you know, amend these, um, do you I mean, you may need to add some at some point, but it looks fine the way it is.
Okay, that's fine. All right.
Ready to vote?
Oh, vote?
To move it to the next-
Oh.
Yeah, we got a motion, amended motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
You're agreed with him? Okay.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. We're rolling on nine o'clock. So the question is, do you wanna do discussion or you, this is sort of discussion, what we've been doing, I guess, where that goes.
Can I, can I ask a question, Ms. Catherine, on her site plan review process? When we're talking about it, that she's a pastor.
Yes, for discussion only, I put that-
I understand. Typically, what we have followed, you've got down here a building official in the seat for a temporary thing, and that's any of the roads or any of the things that we've had to have, we have put in one and a half times the bond. Whatever the estimated cost, they bring us three estimates, we average them, use the middle and whatever, and we put in one and a half times, instead of saying estimated cost of incomplete work plus fifteen percent administrative fee.
So you already take bonds for, is that-
Like we do road utilities and-
For your roadways?
Yes, yes, we do.
So you do one and a half, you don't do fifteen percent of the total?
No.
I mean, it's, it's one half dozen of the other.
Yeah, we take, it's just-
When I, you're talking about the, you say in here the incomplete work, and that's what we do, is if they, what they, they have to bond out, but we want it, we do one and a half times.
I mean, I think that's fine.
Because we, you know, that covers us on any rise. Is that-
Um, yeah, I mean, as long as you, you keep a, uh, the total amount, plus it's an administrative fee is basically what it is. Because somebody's having to keep track of it, somebody's, and basically you're making-
I don't mind adding administrative fee in there, I'm just saying that we, we, we multiply whatever they turn in as a bid-
By one-
By one and a half times.
I think that's fine.
And that's what our bond typically ends up being. But if, if that's something we need to add as an administrative cost, then we may need to look at that.
I mean, it's huge, you gotta consider administrative costs and also you gotta consider inflation. Now, for, for roadways, they can, they can go several years and you can have really high spikes in, you know, price of asphalt, price of lumber, um-
You can, yes.
So, um, this is quick. Um, tim- typically, see, it's only for nine months, there doesn't usually have that much fluctuation. So you do one point five, you're probably covered.
And we, we-
And if that's what you do, I would stick with it.
Okay. The, the other thing that we talked about, and this is, and I would like to, if we could add this in here to this, is as-built. So whenever a development comes in, because we do not have an engineering staff in this county, okay? To, to do that. So what I would like is, is that to, to part of this be going in, and for any, for site plans or subdivisions, whether there is a road or drainage, that's, drainage, especially drainage, that's gonna be required, that the engineer of record who designed it, uh, or a third party be required, once completion is done, that they bring us an as-built showing that it was built to those specifications. Cause we run, we run into some of those issues, and we don't, we don't have an engineer in this county. And so we had to, we actually had to bring the, the original engineer out back to, because what happens is, is that they don't retain him and they build it, and the next thing you know, it's not built the way it was designed. And we don't have, we don't have the capability in this county to have somebody on staff to go out there and, and do that. So I'm thinking I would like to see this, to have as-built in there to protect us at the end. And because the other thing is, is that once, here, here's your typical happens, we give them a final plat, okay? If the final plat comes in and they have put everything in, then on the final plat we say, okay, give us an as-built showing us on this final plat that your drainage is in the way that it was supposed to be in your preliminary, and all your utilities are in. But if we take a bond, okay? If we take a bond for that and everything else, and then let's say, a year and a half, two years down the road, and we're, and we're stuck there with something that was built that was not correct and everything else, then we're, then we've got to try to make that good. And I, I'm thinking is, is, my thinking is that somewhere along the line, I think there need to be, needs to be an as-built. And, and the reason I say that is, is that I think there needs to be an as-built before. Building permits are issued.
Um, okay, two things. As-built's for, um, when you plat property and you're installing roadways and utilities that are dedicated-
Yes.
It is very normal to have, require as-built drawings.
Yes.
Meaning that as somebody's putting them in, they're going out and surveying exactly where they are.
Yes.
And that enables your utility district to be extremely efficient in keeping track of those. This is going in, so you would put that requirement in the subdivision regulations. This is an amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Amendment to the zoning ordinance, okay. So we need to do that, go, that needs to go in there.
That would have to go in your sub regs.
Okay, so the question is, is that a lot of times, the occupancy permits are not really granted through us in some, they are established by, uh, resolution through the county. And, and would they not do the same for a grading permit?
Uh, now, the grading permit I threw in there because it sounds like you've got people who go out and do large grading, and they don't have anything approved, or they-
That's true.
They haven't gotten a site plan approved, they go out there and grade, and then they come in with a site plan, and then you've lost the ability to affect the site.
Okay.
Uh, that's a, that's a, that's very much a suggestion.
So that means then that they, you want them, who's gonna, who do you want to issue the grading, okay, the grading permit? Planning commission or county?
No, you, you have no authority administratively.
That's right, that's what I was thinking.
So thi- this has three different sections to it.
Yes.
You, you, you are approving, this body is approving site plans, and then the guys go out there and build whatever they want to. And you're, you're losing that connection between the two.
We are.
Um, so if you issue an occupancy permit, they can occupy the site, they can't use the buildings until they get an occupancy permit. Uh, now, the kicker here is, one, they have to do it, two, um, and this is something you brought up, you don't have staff to go out and do the inspections.
And, and the other side of that is that the staff we do have, we can't afford to have somebody trained in the county.
Right.
And, and so we would have to defend that in court.
And so the, um-
Is that where you're talking about?
The certificate of- I'm sorry.
Yes, that's the certificate, we talked about that, certificate of compliance.
Certificate of compliance.
And that is basically an as-built, basically what it says in there, yes.
It is, and it, but it is of the, it is of a commercial site by the engineer of record.
Yes.
And so before you issue the occupancy permit, you have the developer have his engineer go out and inspect their, his own site, and submit a certificate of compliance that it has been built in compliance with the approved site plan, with these exceptions. And I, I did, I, I think I did not include this, I did a permit for you.
Okay, so we'll do it there.
I didn't put it in here, sorry about that. uh, also you've got temporary occupancy permits, and the standard temporary is that, uh, let's say you're putting a buffer in, you've got a warehouse, you go to install a buffer, it's August, you don't want anybody planting anything in August. So you get a temporary permit, your staff takes a bond for the vegetative material, and within nine months they have to install it. So that means if they're, if they're coming in in December, you don't like to plant, a- and it's basically the, usually the reason. Um, so you give them till spring, and if it's August, you give them till November. Um, partial occupancy permit is the guy just came in and said, um, I wanna do, I wanna phase something in. Okay, you give them a, a, a partial permit, a, a partial temporary, a partial occupancy permit. So you're certifying this building was built according to the plan, this building was built according to the plan, and then you get a occupancy permit for the whole thing. Now, I'm surprised that your banks around here don't object, because they're issuing construction loans, um, it's a big deal for most developers that their construction loan is being transferred to a permanent mortgage, and the bank won't do it till you've got an occupancy permit. So once they find out you've got a permit procedure, they'll hold it up, and the bank almost becomes your regulating authority. Uh, so this gives you these, um, these, these improvements, and it doesn't, aside from the staff sitting here and issuing a permit, they're not going out inspecting. Um, they get a building permit, you require, they, they, you get the, uh, certificate of compliance, you get a occupancy permit, either a temporary, a permanent, or a partial.
All right, that's-
Uh, you know, it's, it's one of the main things that people been, I mean, I didn't count the number of citizens that made comments, but, um, if your, um, sheds that turned into these massive structures, you had this, that wouldn't have happened. And if they're not going through this process, you, I would put six point six point four, stopper quarter.
That happened.
Oh, yeah, then, then, um-
That happened.
Yeah, you did.
It's just that there's been a lot of misconception about this whole project all along, that, that, basically, that the, the people in charge were not on top of this. They were. The people came in, got a proper permit to build a, an agricultural shed, okay? And they started the process, and there were inspections that were done. The problem was, is, is, is this, is that when you've got one person that has to cover the whole county, and you've got all this construction going on, and somebody's off in, in hidden as far as that goes, and they start going in a different direction, and then you catch them, and, and at that point in time. And then there was a cease and desist placed on this project, as far as that goes. It's just that it was at the point that everybody's had the misconception that it's already finished and it's in operation, and it's not. And even though people look at it and say, well, there's no way that's a shed, well, it may be the most expensive shed in the whole county, but that's the way it was permitted, and that's the way it was, it will be, if he gives them a certificate of occupancy, it will be as a utility shed structure. And they won't, you know, if they, and then if they proceed to go and, and use it and live it in it, which is in a violation of the zoning then at that point in time, then they can be prosecuted. But they haven't done that as of yet. That's their intention, uh, everybody assumes that's their intention, but as far as I know, that's not. And, you know, Tom was here and he, earlier, and he was gonna address a lot of the issues in here for this, is that I think the only thing they have for safety is he gave them for a, a, uh, one water closet, one sink, that's all they have was approved. Now, they have all those people using this and everything else, but a lot of people are also bringing up about the fact is this, and this, this is true in this county, okay? This is turned into a commercial project, when it went, basically when he says what he wanted to do at that point in time. Which means that just like you said last time, and I knew this as well, the state was gonna come in, state fire marshal was gonna step in there for, based on the use he was gonna do, and he wasn't, they weren't even close to prepared for, for all the things they were gonna do. But there's, there's been a lot of misconceptions on, especially on this, that, that, that that was going on. They, that, the county, the county has known. It's just they, you know, sometimes, what you, you, first of all, you can't really stop people from going back onto the property, and you can't be there monitoring twenty-four hours a day in this instance, and so if they continue to do the work, then they're in violation. So I think, I think it's been turned over to legal, and it just has to go through the process. And, uh, you know, my-
So they can have waiting weddings up there and everything?
No.
No.
They can't.
What, what Terry's saying is that, that just because that was issued yesterday does not mean it ex, that they actually stop. If they violate that order, I mean, then we gotta turn it over to legal, and then legal's got to bring it to court, and then court's got to go for the case. I mean, there's a judicial process that, that goes down too, and-
And it's going through that process. There's just a lot of misconception out there from, from that standpoint on, on what's going on, and, uh, but it, but it has gone through the process, cause I mean, I, I, I've talked to Rob a lot about it, he brought it to me and talked to me about it, and he said, he said, they came in for a, an agricultural building, accessory building, to go on the property, which is allowed use in a- which is allowed use in a neighborhood zone, okay? Now, that is turned into something else, and then when he found that, at that point in time, then the process was that, what are your intentions? Because it looks like this is a whole lot more than just a, a.
Shed.
A shed, okay? And then that's when they had to come in before us last month to, to see if then their intentions was, well, it's not really going to be a shed, it's going to be a camp. And at that point in time, we said, no, okay? And that's, that's where we stand. So we gave them an option, that maybe they could come back and ask for RR, they didn't come back this month. They didn't, they didn't request to get on. So speculation is, you know, as far as that goes, if they go, can, go on after, after this to continue, and they, then they don't get a certificate of occupancy, then I can say they've got the most expensive shed in Jefferson County. And that's what it boils down to. And if that's, if that, you know, and we don't have, we don't have any guidelines as far as what your shed has to look like and anything else. It can be as lavish to be, it can be as lean to, we don't, we don't have any of those things. I'm just saying that in, in this process here, there's been some misinformation about how this process is going on, and there were some checks and balances in place, and it was caught. It's just, you know, uh, because I know it's gotten blown out of proportion. One, a couple of other things, okay? So there were still some people who came tonight about what's going on with the, uh, with Wailing at, um, twenty-five seventy P. M., okay? It's, it's a court issue now. This, this board here, we had, we had no say-so on anything from now on out, on that. We had nothing. We, we had no control, we had no police powers, we can't go down there and make them stop. The only person that can do that is basically right now are the courts. Now, is he, we don't know how the case, we don't know how the case is going to turn out as far as that goes. But it's this, you know, if he can, he, he's continued to basically be in violation of what we have sent him in regards to cease and desist. So which means then that basically, what, the way I understand it then, there is a, a fine in place for every day that he's in operation. And that continues on, okay, until actually we get to the court date. All right, if the court comes in and decides, hey, you're guilty, then they can assess him and he would have to pay that fine, all right? And they may say, you are going to have to cease and desist, because they make, make a determination that it is a quarry, okay? But right now, the court's going to have to make that decision, that, not this board. We already have a definition in there of what quarrying is, as far as that goes. And the thing is, is that these people never came before this board in the first place. They, they came before the zoning office and were told they could do it. They never came here beforehand. The other thing was, that would help is now is, is this grading permit. When somebody comes in, there's going to be a timeframe on there, and there's going to have to be a plan in place showing what you're wanting to accomplish. And the other thing is that you brought up about is, is the noise ordinance, which is there, okay? So, but the county does not have anything on the books for noise, but you could, the county commission could add something in there. Uh, I don't know that that's a place for a planning commission to make that determination, is it?
It, it can't, it, noise cannot go in a zoning ordinance.
So.
That'd have to be a freestanding.
There were a lot of things that were, that were said as far as that goes, and that was basically your questions, which we can't, you know, we, we can't answer. But I can now, I felt like I needed to let you know that, you know, a lot of things are there that it wasn't, there's information out there, some of it is not correct. And that there, there has been things kind of stood down through the process. And sometimes it just gets out of our hands, sometimes the court's going to have to decide it. Now, he, here's the thing with Wailing. So the, the, they filed suit in the county. It could be two years before this case is ever heard, in which case then they're continuing to do what they're doing, all right?
That annoying me.
The, I mean, and so it's not as if we can go down there and say, and, and, and put them in handcuffs and, and take them, it's a civil matter. It's a civil matter. So I, I wish we had better, better, you know, there was more there, but the state limits us extremely in how we punish people. Uh, you know, for a fifty dollar a day fine for some people, that's, that's peanuts. They'll pay it and go on and not even worry about it. But I'm just saying that there are things out there that we're, we're limited. And, uh, I, I'm just curious if, if county commission has heard everything that we heard tonight.
Well, a lot of it, they, they've attended our meetings, and, and our, again, county commission is in the same boat. I mean, there's, they didn't give Austin a badge and a gun, and they didn't give him set of handcuffs to go down there and get them. And there's not, I mean, it, you're right, there's a civil thing, and whether you're.
I like where you're headed though.
Where, where you're looking at this, whether you believe it or not, just because it's something that you like or not, there is a process in this country, the legal process, that we have to go through. And there's nothing we can do about it, we can't speed it up, we can't. It, it's the process, and if you believe in the process, then that's where it is.
It's just that sometimes the process doesn't work fast enough.
It is.
The other thing about establishing permits, it, it gives you points to check in. It also is a revenue generator that pays for itself. In that you do an occupancy permit, you do a grading permit, you do a stop work order, and each one of those carries a permit fee. And over the course of the year, that permit fee is earmarked for staff.
But it, it's, it's like we discussed, I mean, when we put in zoning in nineteen ninety-seven or eight, none of this stuff was being phased, so I mean, it's a.
Right, right.
An evolving thing.
Yeah, it is. It is, it, I think it's evolved, but I think it has evolved faster than, uh, your zoning ordinance has kept up with it. I will say that the market is always in front of the zoning ordinance, but you have to be nimble as far as being able to address it quickly.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, I'm ready for it.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you.
My promotion.